Okay. Okay, so today is January 8th, 2024. This is a hearing of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Torrington. Today, we have, for purposes of this hearing, to appoint a alternate to the board. So I'll just have the regular members roll call. And then, well, go from there and I'll get the alternates in after. So, members? I'll start James Steck, acting chair for today, member.
Kenneth Edwards.
Stephen Thompson.
Randy Stelma.
Chris Smith.
Carrie Viber.
Okay, just for the record, both Carrie and Chris are appearing via... This is not Webex. This is...
Teams.
Teams, thank you, Microsoft Teams. Alright.
If you, if you could just announce what, who your five seated members are?
So the five seated members will be Carrie Viber, Ken Edwards, myself. And then, who else is a regular member of... We just had a recent kind of shuffle.
I think we...
Stephen and I are alternates.
Yeah.
Chris is a regular member, Chris Smith.
Chris Smith, okay. So I say Ken Edwards, Chris Smith, myself, and then Stephen sitting next to me. Wait, or, I'm sorry.
I'm Ken.
Ken. Ken, and so it's that. Ken?
So either, either Stephen or, or...
You guys want to flip a coin for it?
Randy, I need to be seated. Yeah, either one.
Let's say, Stephen will be the seated member. Okay.
Stephen, okay.
Thank you. So we've got minutes for approval from December 11th, 2023. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
All in favor? Oh, I need a second.
Second.
I don't think you can second it because you weren't seated for the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so just for the record, Randy seated.
No, Stephen, Stephen is seated. Who?
That's Randy on the end.
Randy, oh, sorry, sorry.
I just want to be clear.
Whoever, whoever said they were the senior member.
Okay, so Randy seated on the end here.
Sorry.
Got it. Want to be clear for the record.
Okay, so Randy second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, so we've got old business. We opened an app, a hearing on the application of Gary Hattstat. It's an appeal of the action of the CEO, a letter by the CEO stating that they abandoned the pre-existing non-conforming use. And I believe Mr. Hattstat is represented by attorney media. Okay. I think we're ready to go. Any points of order before we begin?
However you want to run it, but usually the enforcement officer goes first. It's up to you.
Oh, um, he's...
Because he has to present.
I could ask you to just get a little closer mic on. Sorry, attorney, what I'll have, I'll do just for purposes of the record is I'll have the CEO just start. He can say his case, then you can appeal. Great, sorry about that.
Not a problem.
All right, I gotta adjust this thing. It goes up. I'll give that. So for the record, Nate Nardi Cyrus, zoning enforcement officer for the city of Torrington. And so I just want to lay out my case for the appeal application for my decision regarding the abandonment of pre-existing non-conforming uses at 441 Oak Ave. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read my memo dated December 11th, 2023 into the record. And as, as I'm doing that, I will share with the commission exhibits relevant to my case. And yeah, and then I'll pass it off from there. So this was to the zoning board of appeals from Nate Nardi Cyrus, zoning enforcement officer dated December 11th, 2023, CEO digits decision appeal 441 Oak Ave. On 10/23/23, under my authority as the zoning enforcement officer for the city of Torrington, I issued a notice of violation to Mr. Gary Hattstat, owner of 441 Oak Ave in Torrington, Connecticut, with the determination that his residence was a pre, a legal pre-existing non-conforming commercial garage was grounds for extinguishment of that grandfathered commercial garage used in favor of the conforming residential use. This notice requires him to obtain the necessary permits to legally convert the building into a residence and discontinue his current commercial use of the property. This includes the removal of inoperable and unregistered vehicles and associated materials classified as junk being stored outside of an enclosed structure. In land use law, property uses that existed prior to the enactment of zoning regulations, effective date in Torrington, 12/24/1957. For specific sections of those regulations that have been amended are allowed as legal pre-existing non-conforming uses. In lay terms, this is often called grandfathering. However, if a use is abandoned, the property loses that status and must conform to the current zoning code. There's an abundance of case law which clarifies what constitutes as an abandonment. Clement Family Limited Partnership versus East Windsor Zoning Board of Appeals, January 10th, 2007, established the use of an abandonment does not have to be voluntary but can be determined based, based on the property owner's use or intended use for the site because the garage is not divided into multiple units. And we believe Mr. Hattstat is occupying this garage. Two uses cannot exist simultaneously. And therefore, the non-conforming commercial garage must be extinguished in favor of the permitted residential use of the property due to demonstrated residential use of the property. On 11/17/2023, Mr. Hattstat filed an appeal of this decision with our office on the grounds that he does not reside at the address and therefore has not abandoned the commercial garage use established in 1950 according to assessor records. So I realized I hadn't entered a couple of things into the record, so I want to do that right now. The first thing I'm going to enter in is this memo that I'm reading off just so that you have reference.
Thank you.
And this is currently being displayed on the screen for those who are attending via Zoom. The case Clement Family Limited Partnership versus East Windsor Zoning Board of Appeals is exhibit A2, and so that's the next on, on this list. So Jeremy, you can scroll through that, but that, that's been entered into the record. I do have a copy. Yes. Yep.
Nate, this isn't showing on screen at home.
You have to share screen, Jeremy.
Thanks, Gary. I thought it was just me.
Nope, it was me.
All right, still on this page, I wanted to enter exhibit B. So Jeremy, if you scroll through that. So exhibit B is the current assessor card for the city of Torrington, 441 Oak Ave, which shows the established 1950 assessor record use of the property as a commercial garage, which predates zoning and therefore, you know, makes this a legal non-conforming use of the property.
I think, yeah. Oh, not really, no. What we'll do is we can have, he'll present his case. You can address his, his case at the end.
So yeah, I'll finish reading the memo in, and I'll be on top of the exhibits. Sorry for that.
Can you specify one more time what exhibit this is?
Sure, this is exhibit B.
Exhibit B.
Yep, and Jeremy will show it on the screen as, as we move along. So I'll start this one again. On 11/17/2023, Mr. Hattstat filed an appeal of this decision with our office on the grounds that he does not reside at the address and therefore has not abandoned the commercial garage use established in 1950 according to assessor records of the property. So this is just establishing his legal non-conforming use of the property because it predated zoning. The following is a timeline of the land use department enforcement's actions with evidence used to support the determination that Mr. Hattstat has resided at 441 Oak Ave on multiple occasions over the years. Bold sections indicate formal notices sent to Mr. Hattstat from our department. Note that on one instance, note that only one instance of Mr. Hattstat residing at 441 Oak Ave is necessary to consider the pre-existing non-conforming use abandoned. And so before going into the timeline, I'd just like, this is outside of this memo, but I'd just like the commission to consider the following points. Number one, conducting two uses on the property. There is, I'm sorry, number one, there are two uses being conducted on this property, a primary residence and a repair garage. Two, he's using it as a reference despite multiple verbal and written warnings. Three, you can't have two uses in the same space at the same time. For the resident, the residential use is a conforming use and the repair garage is a legal non-conforming use. Five, the only issue to decide is the establishment of whether or not there's residents. Well, I wouldn't say the only issue. So there's two issues to be decided, whether or not Mr. Hattstat is residing at 441 Oak Ave as his legal residence. And number two, whether or not it's a legal, this would constitute, that there's a legal case for the extinguishment of his pre-existing non-conforming use based on his residency of that site. So is he living there? And is, is him living there constitute an abandonment of his pre-existing non-conforming use? Since he can't, in my estimation, since he can't have both uses at the same time in the same space, we don't allow in our land use code, two uses in a single space. Then the conforming use, conforming with the district, zoning district prevails and the non-conforming use must be abandoned. So I'm, I'm just going to go through my timeline here. So Jeremy, please move to exhibit C to be entered into the record. So this is the, on 10/20/20, the original complaint of an illegal use of a commercial garage as a residence as received by the city of Torrington Land Use Office. And so moving on to exhibit D. This is the deputy fire marshal inspection record dated 11/20/20 in which quoted, Jeremy, if you keep on scrolling, I know it's hard, it's on the side, but that, that's the, the text that goes with it. The fire marshal indicates that Gary did say that the building department was here and I told him that he needs to go to zoning to change the occupancy because he stays here. He said that that may happen in the near future. Moving on to, so that was exhibit D. Exhibit E. These are two notices sent by our blight enforcement officer, one on 11/20/20, notice of possible blight violation sent to 32 Overlook Court, which was the address we had on file for Mr. Hattstat. And then the next one was 11/25, notice of possible blight violation sent to 441 Oak Ave, after which he communicated with our office. That's not a part of this case, the blight. These are just notices sent from our office. Exhibit F. This is the first notice of zoning violation received for illegal use of the commercial garage as a residence dated 12/28/20. So this was sent by zoning enforcement officer at the time, Jeremy Lifer. And I picked up the case later on. After, after that happened, the case was closed. As you can see on this document, Mr. Hattstat demonstrated that he complied and was not living at the property anymore, and it was closed. However, Mr. Lifer sent another follow-up notice dated February 4th, 2021, stating that if our office determines at any point in the future, you are continuing to use this building as a residence, you will immediately use your grandfathered zoning use as a commercial garage and will be required to obtain all permits and bring the building up to residential standards. All right, and so the next exhibit H. This was dated 3/21. And just to note for the record too, these are in chronological, chronological order. This was an email dated 12/6/23 from police sergeant Justin Baldus, summarizing the police reports related to 441 Oak Ave. And so I'll call your attention to, in this report that, on the three, right, so this covers multiple dates, this, this exhibit H, but on 3/21, police spoke with the landlord at 32 Overlook Court, which was Mr. Hattstat's claimed residence. And that landlord indicated Mr. Hattstat received mail there but did not live there. 3/21 also found on that report, police observed futon wood stove and space heater at 441 Oak Ave. That's exhibit H. On 4/11/2021, this is exhibit I. That's the next one, Jeremy. This is the judicial record for Mr. Hattstat's arrest for failure to register on the sex offender registry for not, so not to register his legal address as 441 Oak Ave. On, the next is exhibit J. This is, was, is 11/2021, in which an officer observed Mr. Hattstat's license listing 441 Oak Ave as his primary residence. Or it, rather, it listed it as his address. And I'll also enter exhibit K, which, this is just a registration form for licensure, and you can see in the highlighted that if there's no other, if you're only provided a mailing address and you don't have a separate residential address, you know, the mailing address is considered your residence. Moving on to exhibit L, 4/11/2023, so we're skipping ahead. This is a superior court decision in which Mr. Hattstat is required to vacate his abode at 127 Mondry Road by 4/25/2023. And then exhibit M, which is dated 5/5/2023, is a new complaint about illegal use of the commercial garage as a residence from the same occupant in 2020. And so that was less than a month later. 10/23/23, a second zoning notice of violation was sent regarding the abandonment of the pre-existing non-conforming use in the residential zone. So this is the notice that's being appealed in which we stated, you know, because of his continued residential use of the site, that we were considering this to be an abandoned legal pre-existing non-conforming use. And that, you know, Mr. Hattstat should bring the property into compliance with, with current building code surrounding that and cease commercial operations on the property. And then finally, on 11/17/2023, I don't have this as a exhibit, but it, this is when we received the official, the appeal, this appeal from Mr. Hattstat, which was done during the 30 days that, you know, he was given to make that appeal. So in my memo, in conclusion, based on the above explanation of legal pre-existing non-conformities and their abandonment, I consider Mr. Hattstat's residence at 441 Oak Ave as a formal abandonment of his pre-existing, his legal pre-existing non-conforming commercial repair garage on the property. The most significant evidence demonstrating Mr. Hattstat's residence of the property after being warned by former CEO Jeremy Lifer in his 2/4/2021 letter. So these include exhibit H. Sorry, Jeremy, this might make you move around a little bit, but that was already submitted into the record. That was the, the police report claiming that the, where the officer spoke with the landlord at 32 Overlook Court, who asserted that Mr. Hattstat did not live at that claimed address. An April 2021 arrest of Mr. Hattstat for violation of his sex offender registry reporting requirement, that was exhibit I. Was that, was that submitted already? Make sure. Yes. A November, another piece of evidence is the November 2021 police report claiming Mr. Hattstat's valid driver's license showed 441 Oak Ave as his address, as shown in exhibit J and K. On April 2023, court requiring Mr. Hattstat to vacate the legal residence at 127 Mondry Road and subsequent May 2023 complaint claiming he was again occupying 441 Oak Ave. We also have multiple consecutive video recordings from June to July 2023 showing Mr. Hattstat saying overnighted as a garage and leaving the following morning. We're not, that's, that's been posted online and on the, on the website for the ZBA for, for this hearing. And folks could come into the office to, to view those recordings, but that's not a major part of our case anyway. I'd like to submit exhibit O, Jeremy. That's, scroll down again. So exhibit O, this is Mr. Hattstat's sex offender registry accessed 12/23, listing his address as homeless in Woodbury with a secondary address of 441 Oak Ave. Our point being that, our point being that, you know, to be homeless and have a secondary place to live that we're demonstrating that you're occupying for extended periods of time. And that's the case that the city of Torrington is bringing during, after their arrest. Exhibit P, the submitted zoning decision appeal application that Mr. Hattstat provided, listing only 441 Oak Ave as his mailing address with no other addresses listed. Exhibits C and M, which were already submitted, neighboring complaints attesting to Mr. Hattstat's residence at 441 Oak Ave. Exhibit Q, which is the next exhibit on this, Jeremy. Mailing address on file from Torrington tax collector and assessor is 441 Oak Ave. Exhibit H, which has already been submitted, is the police report showing over the past two years, Mr. Hattstat has been observed at 441 Oak Ave at all hours of the day, not just during the night as he's claimed in his appeal. And, and finally, again, in exhibit H, the police dash cam record showing, a summary of police stash cam records showing Mr. Hattstat's vehicles only parked at 441 Oak Ave while not driving. And so that is all that I have to present right now. Be happy to take questions before turning it over to Mr. Hattstat and his counsel.
Okay, do any of the commission members have any questions?
I have questions. This is Carrie.
So do I.
Yes.
Go ahead, Carrie.
So Nate, you're using case law from 2007 saying that they don't have to explicitly give up the non-conforming use. And my concern is that Public Act 1739, which became effective July 1st, 2017, changed the language significantly since that case law came out in 2007, which actually says that regulations cannot, basically, the, the prop, the, I'm sorry, the, I'll just read it. So it's Connecticut General Statute 8-2, section D4. The, the regulations can't prohibit the continuance of any non-conforming use building structure existing at the time of adoption of such regulations without, I'm skipping ahead, without regard to the intent of the property owner to maintain the use. We've been told over and over again in the land use law seminars that we've attended, that there has to be explicit termination from the property owner, that that's not something that you can force on them. And, and so I guess I'm confused how you arrived at using that case law to support this when more recent documentation, including our seminar we attended back in March 11, 2023, had said some of those closed cases that were cited that showed abandonment may actually be decided differently now after that 2017 amendment to Connecticut General Statute 8-2.
Yeah, so thanks for that, Carrie. So this case doesn't have a lot of precedent in case law that we could find because if you look at most of the abandonment cases, they're looking at, an example would be a gas station, right, that, that might be cited at a location as pre-existing, legal pre-existing non-conforming. The gas station is razed, the property becomes vacant, someone comes back at, you know, five, 10, 20, 50 years later and wants to reestablish the use. And the case law is generally saying, you know, you would need a formal, you know, abandonment, the, the owner would have to voluntarily abandon that use for you to do that. And so we, what we're saying is that, you know, if, if you're operating, an example that I was giving, or that I was thinking about was if you had like a legal, an illegal pre-existing non-conforming, two-family home, right, or, I'm sorry, let me rephrase this. You have a two-family home, but it's had a pre-existing non-conforming use of an office on the first floor and a residence on the second, right? This is just an example for how our office, if we were to go in and discover that that first floor that was an office was a, a residence all of a sudden, wouldn't that be abandonment by virtue of them changing the use and, and, and not actually, like, it's not becoming vacant, they're not leaving it vacant. They're actively changing the use by conforming, constructing it and, you know, making it into something that they're using. So the point being that, you know, if we have, like in the case of, of Mr. Hattstat, right, we have the garage and a garage can only have one use, it's not a subdivided building. And it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. And so he is occupying that building willfully. He's been notified that, you know, he needs to discontinue occupying that because that's not a part of his use on that property. And it's since you can't, you can't live in a garage. Our zoning regulations don't allow you to just to live in a garage. You'd have to have a separate unit to be living in. So, you know, so, so basically, you know, by virtue of him changing to a residence, all of a sudden, it's in conformity and we're just enforcing the conforming use of the property. So it is a little, I, I feel that it's a little different than something that's been completely abandoned, right, or that's been, become vacant and there's a question of whether or not it's been abandoned. To me, it's not a question because we've demonstrated that he is occupying and has changed the use because he is living there. So that, that's our position on it.
Do you have any follow-up questions, Carrie?
He's not using it as a garage?
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself for the record?
Chris Smith.
Go ahead, Chris.
He is not using it as a garage?
He, he is using it as a garage and a residence. That's what we're claiming. So, so he has two uses occurring in a space that can only legally have one use.
Nate, just to go back to that, this is Carrie again. So in the record, I want to say there was a trade name certificate that was filed that was in your establishing of addresses.
Right.
Right, for his business. Is he filing personal property declarations as well for the business?
I'm not sure about that. I haven't, I haven't checked with the assessor on that. Oh, I'm, yeah, the assessor. I have records from the, from the tax collector.
Okay, and his motors, I'm sorry. His motor vehicles, are they being taxed in Torrington as his residence being here?
I'm, I'm not certain of that.
Because that would also be a way to establish residency. Your vehicles are supposed to be taxed where they leave and return to most frequently.
I don't have that information.
Okay.
Let me ask one quick question. This is James Steck for the record. Nate, so your position is that by, where's the voluntary portion of, of seating the commercial use of the garage? It's involuntarily... commercial use of the garage? It's involuntarily using it as a residence or voluntarily, like, can you just flesh out a little bit?
Yeah, our position is that he would, that Mr. Hadsad was notified that he has a use that's pre-existing non-conforming for that garage and that we were going to, if he, if he was going to change uses to a conforming use, that, you know, that we would make this decision. And so he, you know, had the option to not, to not occupy it as a legal residence. And we're saying that he did, he did voluntarily continue to occupy that. And so, you know, any of the, any of the materials prior to Mr. Leifert's notice claiming that he, you know, that this would be revoked, we're not even considering. What the consideration is that he was given a formal warning by written notice twice and was informed in the last notice that he cannot do that and that we, that we would be taking this action and that he is voluntarily abandoning because, you know, he received that notice.
Okay. Are there any other questions from commission members? So Attorney Medina, in the, yes, well, yeah, I guess, Nate, is there room to share the?
I was gonna step down and let Mr. Medina come up. So, yeah, I was gonna just sit up.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lou Medina. I'm the attorney for Mr. Hadsad. I've got a couple of questions to begin with. And they're going to be directed at Mr., I don't know whether you use the hyphenated name or just?
Yeah, Nardi Cyrus, yes.
So Cyrus or?
Nardi Cyrus.
Cyrus. So let me ask you, in the time you've been handling this violation, how many times have you visited the property?
I don't have an exact number, but probably six or seven times.
And how many times did you go inside?
Zero.
So, let me see, you just, you kept repeating while you were standing up here that he's living there. How do you know he's living?
Because he's listed on official residency documents that that is his address.
Oh, so you're suggesting that 441 Oak Ave was not a legal address?
I'm suggesting that, that that is what he is claiming as a legal address.
He can use an address that he owns, correct?
He can use an address that he owns, correct, but if he's?
Does, does his electric bill for that property go to that address?
I'm not sure he never, he didn't provide that information.
Okay. I'm telling you, is electric, would you, withdrawn, would you believe that his electric bill to that address goes to that address?
I wouldn't know either way.
Okay. But if it does, you wouldn't say that's a violation, would you?
No, I wouldn't. Yeah, the main point of our case is that.
I'm not asking you the main point. I'm asking the question now, if you don't mind. Okay? You've already stood up here and laid out your case in total. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. So now I get to ask some questions now, if you don't mind. And I'm trying to be respectful. Okay?
Attorney Medina, I was just questioning, technically, you're supposed to be asking through the chair, so I'll allow you to continue this way.
Any way, any way you want me to do it.
Keep you inside the, okay, you can continue asking questions.
Okay. So we've established you've never been inside, is that correct?
That's correct.
So is there a kitchen?
I'm on film, I do not know the answer to that question.
Is there a bathroom?
I don't know the answer to the question.
Well, has the fire department been there and told you there isn't a kitchen and a bathroom?
Fire marshal was there and did state, well, they didn't state either way, they just said Mr., that he was occupying the structure and he had to bring it into conformity.
The fire marshal said he was occupying the structure?
That's correct.
And which exhibit is that?
This was prior to Mr. Leifert's memo, so.
But didn't you say that everything prior to Mr. Leifert's memo was no longer of any consequence because that's what you were going on?
Yes, absolutely. I'm just answering your question.
Okay.
Let's see, so that would be 11220 from the deputy fire marshal.
Okay, so 11220 would not be impacting this decision that you made, correct?
It's not the, it's not the major substance of our case now.
No, no, that's not my question. I mean, I'm trying to make sure that we have an answer to the question. The question is, are you using that issue for this case?
No.
So it's not a major issue and it's not an issue for this case?
Correct.
Okay. So what Mr. Leifert found or did not find, you didn't find or did not find, correct?
I only established what was, what we had for documentation of his address.
You concluded it's his residence without ever being inside, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you concluded, withdrawn. You believe that's his residence based on what?
Believe, based on what he's used, again, mainly the license. If, he mean, he may be illegally reporting to DMV that he's living at that site and he's not living there, but it's a legal residence. Absolutely not. We're just, we're relying on them because we don't have anything else. We were never invited to observe.
Terry Medina, I'm just gonna worry, you're not getting picked up by the mic, just to, I don't think your last question about DMV regulations was caught.
Nothing.
I just caught there.
Hello. Okay. Are you suggesting that the Department of Motor Vehicle is giving you authority to suggest that he's violating the Department of Motor Vehicle regulations?
Absolutely not. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that in the absence of being invited to come and see the interior of Mr. Hadsad's, we're relying on public documentation, a variety of documentation in the absence of knowing, exactly. And as far as how we define residence, you wouldn't necessarily have to have sanitary connection. We have plenty of folks in Torrington that, you know, that don't have sanitary connection and occupy places all the time. So you don't need water.
We're not talking about other places in Torrington, are we? We're talking only about 441. So have, if you haven't been there and you know that, what we're representing to you, that there's no bathroom, no kitchen, no, no facilities at all, it's a garage. It's all equipped with repair equipment. You haven't been in there, have you?
I have not.
Okay. But you made a determination that he's been living there. And you mentioned during your, your presentation that the same neighbor who reported in 2020, we reported it now and that based on that, you believe that's effective to support your position that he lives there?
I think it supports the position. I don't think that's the only piece of evidence, but yes.
I looked at all those videos. Have you looked at them all?
I did. I reviewed the videos.
You noticed you can't see anything other than the one car? You can't see the garage doors open or closed?
Yes, I did notice that.
And you don't think that's important as to how someone could come in and out of that garage?
I don't know if I understand.
All right. Is it your proposition that he, those videos support your position that he was living there?
I feel like those videos aren't, oh, I'm sorry, I'm confused as to which videos you're discussing.
Videos produced by Miss Teeman.
Oh, yes. To be honest, I included those in the record because we had them, but I don't feel it's a major part. I mean, I don't feel that it may support the fact that he's living there, but I'm not, I'm not hanging the case.
How does this support that he's living there?
It just demonstrates that he's coming and going from that.
In his own property? That he's coming and going, did you just hear what you just said? You said that it demonstrates that he comes and goes into his own property. Is that illegal?
Like I said, it's not, it's not a major part of the case. It was just submitted as part of the.
It's not any part of this case. It does not prove anything, does it?
No.
Doesn't prove he lives there? Does it? Okay. So let's take, let's go down, I apologize, this keeps cutting out. Let's go down each of the, this is the sum and substance of your support for making an individual determination that he's living there, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So let's start. And you've already said that everything before 122820, well, in fact, everything before 2421 is not impacting on this case, is that correct?
Everything prior to 122820, which is the first notice of violation from Mr. Leifert.
So you're suggesting that that first notice is, is important?
It's the initiation of our action, yes.
So let me ask you, that notice drew a conclusion, does it not, that he lives here?
Correct.
And what's the basis for that conclusion?
The basis for that conclusion, well, I mean, I did not issue that notice, so I feel like I can't.
Can't speak to it.
Right, that's why a second notice was issued after more evidence was gained.
So we're back to the fact that that notice is not part of this case, is that correct?
Well, it was, it was, it was the initiation of.
An investigation. Okay. But what was the basis of that letter? What was the basis for determining that there was a use of that property as a residence? And I apologize, that comes over too strong.
Well, the initial notice, because it was referring to activities prior to his compliance, included that deputy fire marshal inspection record. So I would assume that Mr. Leifert was going off of the fact that, well, the deputy fire marshal indicated that he appeared that he was living in the building.
Are you saying you're basing your decision now on assumptions of someone else's decision and conclusion?
Absolutely not, no. I mean, that, that was the initiation of the investigation. I had my own notice that came many years after.
Okay.
But that was the period at which Mr. Hadsad was made aware of our interpretation in this office. And so that's why it's a starting point.
When you say our interpretation, who else besides you?
The land use office that, and, you know, that I'm representing. And the prior, the prior zoning enforcement official that issued the notice.
But the prior zoning officials, is residence still in the office?
Correct.
All right. And is he here to testify as to what he believes is going on with that residence?
He could be asked to testify. He's here.
Okay. So I'll ask. Let me go on. So let's take the first date, February 4th, 2021. That was the notice you issued, right?
2021? No, that was, that was the notice that Mr. Leifert issued.
Okay. And what was the basis for that?
Well, I explained that, that the deputy fire marshal inspection record stating that Mr. Hadsad was living on the property.
But you said there was a, there was a conformity and there was no issue with that anymore, correct?
Yeah, after, after that note, so after that notice, which was issued in 122820, it was, or I'm sorry, 112520, there's two notices here. That was marked as compliant by Mr. Leifert. Mr. Hadsad had provided proof of his occupancy at another location. And so.
But let's, let's just look at those two violations. Notice of possible blight violation, that's 11220, correct?
That is, I'm sorry, I may be confusing things as I'm reading them. 112520 is the blight violation. That's not, I included that as just showing, showing our, the action from the land use department, but I'm not.
But what does that have to do with occupying as a residence, occupying as a residence?
It was originally sent to 32 Overlook Court, which was his, his stated address. And then it was sent to 441 Oak Ave, where, after which he contacted our blight enforcement officer. But that's not, like I said, those, those happened before that, when that 2421 zoning notice violation where Mr. Leifert clarified our land use department's position on the, on the issue.
I'm confused. Blight has nothing to do with occupancy as a residence, does it?
Correct.
So why is it there?
It's not, it's not a major issue in the case.
It's not an issue at all, is it? Residency.
Other than being one piece of evidence, or one piece of evidence that it shows that he's receiving mail at 441 Oak Ave, but I understand your point.
Thank you. And I'm going to repeat my question. Does blight have anything to do with residency?
No.
Okay. I'm going to cross out blight, both of those, because they have nothing to do with occupying the property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we, we've already established that 11220, that was complied with and that's no longer of any use at all. So I crossed that out. The original complaint, that's not proof that he actually lived there, is it?
No, but it initiated it and it is, it is evidence that suggests.
It's evidence of a complaint. That's what it's evidence of, nothing else, is that correct?
It's, it's, it's one person's attesting to the fact that.
One person, but it's not evidence of anything other than that person's perception?
Correct.
Okay. And that has nothing to do with your ultimate decision, does it?
I mean, other than, I mean, it initiated the action and I think it is, it's a complaint as any other complaint is weighed in this.
Okay. A complaint starts an investigation, is that correct?
Correct.
It's not evidence of anything, is that correct?
Not until, you know, we have other evidence.
So and that complaint, as far as your concern, was not part of this determination, is that correct?
No, other than its relation to the notice of violation.
Is it part of your decision to determine this is a residence now?
Attorney Medina, I'm going to ask you, let him finish answering the question, because you are. I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble keeping up with the flow, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is a part, it's, it's one person claiming that he's occupying that and that is a piece of evidence that we're using, yes.
You're referring to it as evidence? Is that person here to testify as to what she has or he has as evidence?
I believe so.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll call her. But was it, did it play a role in your decision to determine that 441 is a residence?
I would say so, yes.
Okay. Let's go down to the police report on 321. What, if anything, proves that that's a residence of that report? Want to bring it up? What exhibit is that?
Exhibit H.
Can we bring it up on the screen?
H. It's an email summary of reports.
Of what?
It's an email summary of police reports from Sergeant Baldis, Police Sergeant Baldis.
And what's the summary say? That is a resident, he's living at the property?
I can, I can read it if you'd like.
Yes, please.
In March 2021, reports of Hadsad living at the garage were made, this is all part of the same paragraph, so it may be duplicative. In March of 2021, reports of Hadsad living at the garage were made and midnight shift observers responded at 0213 hours. At the time of contact, both of Hadsad's vehicles were in the driveway and wood smoke was coming from the garage. No noise was made at the time of contact and lights were off. When the contact was made, Hadsad said he was working all hours and didn't wake up, want to wake up his roommates at 32 Overlook Court, where he claimed to reside. There was a futon and space eater in one section of the garage, as noted, but no obvious ways to cook food were seen. When the case was followed up at 32 Overlook Court, the landlord said the property confirmed that Hadsad had rented a room but had not stayed there for months. The landlord said Hadsad had not been living there, at least prior to the new year, which was three months prior. The landlord said that he would call Hadsad and he would go get his mail. Hadsad was later arrested for registry compliance violation of failing to confirm his residence. Case is still pending in court. An address of 127 Mondry Road was also provided and proven to not actually be, be an actual resident in which Hadsad resided.
How many addresses has Mr. Hadsad had in the last five years?
It's my understanding, including 441 Oak Ave, two other ones, 32 Oak Ave and 127 Mondry Road.
Would it surprise you that he had 12 approximately?
Maybe.
All right. But have you looked into each of the addresses to find out who was residing at that address at that particular time?
I did not, no. I'm relying on police reports.
So, police reports regarding 441, but the fact that 441 is a garage, did it give you reason to believe you should check to find out if he has any other residences that he may be paying rent at?
I did not follow up on that and was not given any information by Mr. Hadsad about that.
You brought into evidence the fact that he has a registration requirement as a sex offender. Do you think it's easy to find an address as a sex offender that people willingly continually allow you to stay there?
I don't know.
Okay. But you are responsible to make a determination. You and you alone are responsible to determine whether or not You and you alone are responsible to determine whether or not the garage is a residence, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but you haven't checked into the number of places Mr. Hatstat's lived in in the last four years, have you?
No, we were relying on police reports and other public information.
But is that a reason to terminate a grandfathered garage alone?
That's what we're saying, yes.
Okay. Let's go on. You notice you have in item, I don't know what exhibit it is, because all I had is bullet points. April 11, 2023.
Uh, April, yes.
And you read what that, well, the bullet point says, "Mr. Hatstat must vacate 127 Murray Street Road, Mario Road." Is that correct?
Uh, correct, it was, yeah.
And did you check out that address?
Uh, 127 Mondry Road.
Yes.
I'm going to ask, well, in the gallery, you will get a turn to speak, it's just, right now, we're going to, for purposes of record, need you to reserve your questions for after the attorney's done.
Did you check out that address?
No, I relied on publicly available documents.
But this is a document you're referring to, did you rely, did you verify that he wasn't at that address?
That he wasn't at 127, uh, well.
Mario Road.
I didn't confirm that he was, no.
Well, do you have reason to believe that the court is ordering him to vacate there, that he's residing there?
That is what the order says.
So, wouldn't you conclude, would an ordinary person looking at this say he's residing at that address?
Well, but that was prior to issuing the notice that he was ordered to leave. I would, I, it seems reasonable to assume that he would have complied with the court order and vacated.
But you didn't do any investigation?
I did not follow up on that more.
On 5/5/23, you write, "New complaint about illegal use of commercial garage." Who is that new complaint?
That was from Mr. Hatstat's neighbor, the same who issued the initial complaint.
How many neighbors have complained about Mr. Hatstat living at that residence? At that address, I should say.
Um, I don't have that information right now. Miss Teeman, his neighbor is his only actual budding neighbor.
All right. Well, have you had any formal complaints by anyone else on that block?
Uh, I don't have any in the file from prior to me starting. I had received phone complaints, but at least one other phone complaint.
All right, and who's that from?
Uh, it was another neighbor in the neighborhood, I don't remember exactly who it was.
So the only formal complaint you have in this file is from Miss Teeman, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, did you go see any of the neighbors about Mr. Hatstat? Did you investigate?
I did not.
So you haven't spoke, how many houses are on that neighborhood?
I don't know how you're defining.
Would you say it's more than 10? And you visited none of them to inquire whether they believed Mr. Hatstat was living there?
That's correct.
Now, during your presentation, you kept referring to the two uses. But you don't have no proof whatsoever, actual proof whatsoever, that Mr. Hatstat is residing at 441, do you?
Uh, other than the police reports and his, that include him, his driver's license stating that he lived there. You know, everything else doesn't necessarily conclude that.
All right, but yet you concluded as the zoning officer that it was sufficient to change the grandfathered zoning of that location, is that correct?
Yes, prior, the prior official, Mr. Lifer, had made a determination that was on record for our office and, um, you know, we're consistent with our determinations and we continued that interpretation.
Let me ask a question again, because I'm only asking about you, not Mr. Lifer. Mr. Lifer did never remove the grandfathered. You decided to remove the grandfathered use of that property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you concluded that based upon the use of that property on documents, is that correct?
Correct.
You've never visited the property, the interior of the property?
I was never invited.
And the second, you're never invited, as a zoning officer, are you only allowed, you're only withdrawn? As a zoning officer, your investigation only allows you to visit a property if you're invited?
I mean, we're not permitted to investigate a property unless we have permission to access it.
Did you ask for permission?
Uh, I did not ask for permission, no.
Did you ever meet with Mr. Hatstat to determine whether he was living at that address?
Uh, not personally, no.
So how do you determine someone lives there if you've never been inside? And you've never met with them and you never talked to the neighbors and you're not? What did you do to determine he lived there, other than rely on, you've said it many times, rely on public records that use the address which he owns, you agree he owns that property? My mother-in-law's in the hospital, so I apologize. And it's off. So you've never, this is an important decision, would you agree?
Uh, yes.
And it shouldn't be done lightly, should you agree?
Correct, yes.
And it's going to terminate his ability to make a living, you agree?
I don't know.
Okay, but you do know that you're representing to this board that there's two uses there right now, correct?
Correct.
You have a basis for the commercial use, because it is a commercial garage. You have no basis for the residential basis, no actual evidence you can present to this board that he lives there.
I think that's incorrect, I mean, I would consider the evidence provided by the police department, their investigation, I'd consider that to be valid, and police have access to properties that we don't have and we're relying on, you know, partially on their investigation, but partially on Mr. Hatstat volunteering that, you know, attesting that he lives at 441 Oak Ave on his license at that date.
So, but you asked him and he told you he wasn't? You literally asked him and he told you he wasn't, is that correct?
That's correct.
But you rely on his use as a mailing address and not his actual word, is that correct?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Yes, all right, so, I'm trying to get to the, let me go back a minute. The police indicated that there was a wood stove there, and you thought that was indicia of someone living there?
Uh, the police, the email stated that the stove was observed in operation at all hours, not just in the evenings, as Mr. Hatstat claimed to only be residing there or to be occupying it for his business in the evenings.
You know how a stove, a wood stove works, correct?
Correct.
You know that if you start it, you got to wait till the wood, everything burns out before it stops smoking, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And it doesn't happen in a half hour, 10 minutes, 20 minutes, it keeps smoking until it completely dies out and the ashes turn off, is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding of it.
But that wouldn't be indicia of actual living there if you don't actually observe for a 24-hour period that that stove is on, is that correct?
Uh, I didn't make those observations directly, this is just coming from the police email.
So it's not real evidence, is it?
I believe it is, because it's the police account and the police are coming to the conclusion that that is.
So, are you suggesting that you relied on other people's conclusions to decide Mr. Hatstat was living there?
Correct, yes.
Not your own?
Uh, it's a mix, right, bringing in all kinds of information, but I'm relying on other, I'm relying on police evidence as well, yes.
Police evidence, you're relying on the written police reports, not the actual conversation with the police officer, is that correct?
Uh, I've had conversations with Sergeant Baldis about it, yes.
Is it Sergeant Baldis? How do you spell his name?
Uh, B-A-L-D-I-S.
And he told you he was living there?
Um, that was what he, yeah, that was what he surmised.
And what report is that in?
Uh, well, that's in Exhibit H, which was his email.
Can we go to H again?
Yes.
And by the way, is it illegal to have a heater in your garage?
Uh, no, absolutely not.
And is it illegal to have a futon in your garage?
No.
And is it illegal to have a wood stove in your garage?
No.
So, none of those make that a residence, those items standing alone?
I mean, nothing would, other than living in a location, nothing would make a residence a residence, so we're.
So, I like that, you're saying that only living there, how did you prove that he lived there?
Claiming that that's his address on his driver's license, he's claiming he lives there because he's not providing another address.
Okay. Let's forget about using a piece of paper that has that address as the place. How have you proved that he lives there in the city of Torrington?
Uh, it's that piece of evidence and every other smaller thing that suggests, you know.
Circumstantial stuff.
Right, right.
All the circumstantial stuff that you believe includes.
It's supporting the concrete evidence that we submitted.
What concrete evidence?
Uh, police reports and.
Police reports say that he lives there?
I mean.
No, no, answer that question, police reports say that he lives there?
Uh, no, they don't directly say that.
There is no police report that says he lives there? Is that correct?
Uh, I don't recall exactly what.
You want to take a minute, look through the police reports, see if any one of those reports says he lives there?
Uh, sure, I don't have the, I have one actual report. Okay, so can I read this, the police report, Exhibit J?
Exhibit J, yes, please put it on the screen. Give me a second.
Yes. Uh, that's not it. Yeah, you can, can you spin it? Yeah, there we go. "On 11/22/2021, at approximately 3:25, I, Officer Cook, was dispatched to 441 Oak Ave after receiving a complaint that a sex offender was living at this address and was not registered. Upon arrival, I knocked at the door, the main entry door, and was greeted by Mr. Hatstat. Hatstat immediately told me that he was working there on a compressor without being asked. I explained the reason that we were there is because that if he was staying at this address, uh, it had to be listed on the sex offender registry. Hatstat said that he spends a lot of time there, but that is not his permanent residence. A collector shows that Hatstat uses this address as his permanent address on his license. When I asked Hatstat why, he said it was, he said that it was an error and he tried to say that he was not living at the address. I advised Hatstat that he must register at this address or he may face criminal charges, and he said that this is ridiculous. I have notified the detective bureau in regards to this call for service."
Okay. And that was November of 2021, correct?
Correct.
And the officer indicated, instructed him, would you say that's an instruction to use it as your home address?
Uh, I would say, let me just look at it again.
"I advise Hatstat that he must, M-U-S-T, register at the address or he may face criminal charges."
Right.
So is that what the officer told him to do?
That's what the report says.
And that's the report you're relying on to say he lives there because the officer told him he must use that as his address?
Uh, that is one piece of evidence.
Okay, but you conclude, it's fair to say that you conclude that that report says that he lives there, not that he must register to live there?
Uh, I think that that's what it indicates.
Okay, and let me ask you. We've established now that there's no physical proof he lives there, is that correct?
Uh, what would constitute physical proof?
A kitchen, a bathroom, cabinets, food, something more than just an opinion and an address being used.
But we already told you, we don't consider sanitary water, we don't consider any of that qualification for being a residence, it's if someone's staying there. So it could be, he could have a cot in there and then he could take the cot up away and invite us, so there's really no way for us to know exactly if he's living there, other than if he's claiming that he lives there, which is what we're showing in the license that where he's claiming that address and the police who are conducting an investigation.
Well, your whole case is based upon the fact that he put it as his driver's license, correct?
Uh, that and just other, a lot of other circumstantial evidence that support that.
But there's no actual proof that he lives there, is that correct?
I don't believe that's true.
All right, I'm going to get some documents out of my folder, oh no, they're here, give me one second, no, it's over there. You've received letters from neighbors indicating that they don't believe Mr. Hatstat's lived there, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you have included none, not one of them for the board, is that correct?
That's not our case to present.
It's not your case, so you don't have a responsibility to Mr. Hatstat to not take away something from him without proving? And you don't have a responsibility to give all the evidence to the board, is that correct?
I, it's all posted on the public record. Yeah.
But the board, the documents you provided the board, the people that are here to make a decision, have none of the letters that the residents of that block have written on behalf of Mr. Hatstat.
They should, it was all circulated to them.
So are you saying the board should go, are you suggesting the board has to go to the public record to determine?
No, it was all sent to them.
To who?
The board.
So the board has all the.
Yes, it was sent to us, I can confirm that.
I'm not aware of that. So the board has how many letters?
I'm not certain, it was all sent kind of in a piecemeal way, but we took every piece of evidence that Mr., or every every letter and thing that Mr. Hatstat wanted included on the record, we forwarded that immediately on to the, to the board and posted it online.
Is it more than one?
It is more than one, yes.
Is it more than two?
It is more than two.
Is it more than three?
Okay, really, Attorney Medina, maybe.
How many is it?
Uh, maybe five.
Okay, at least five. Okay, how many complainants are there on that block that say he lives there?
Uh, at least one that I'm aware of, but.
Um, once again, I'll, so the procedure here is that the city puts on their case. Um, Attorney Medina can ask questions to try and poke holes in the case. Um, you will have an opportunity to testify and to speak. I'll ask you to hold on to that until it's your turn so that we're not causing more that needs to be caused, okay? Attorney Medina can proceed.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you. Have you seen photographs of the interior of this garage?
I have, yes.
And have those been provided to the board?
They have.
So I'm going to show you one, I don't know where it is in the file, but I'm going to ask you if you recognize.
We would have to have a digital version to show, right? I have seen that picture. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say for the record that that is, just for the people on Zoom, I mean, on Teams, it is posted online. Yeah.
Is that looking?
Uh, it does not, but I've seen, you know, people don't, that's immaterial to our case.
Attorney Medina, would you mind bringing that over here, I just want to read, would you mind, I'm just going to read it into the record so it's identifiable later if necessary, so just for the record, this is a photograph of a blue Yamaha, I'm going to call it a motorcycle, probably wrong, in a room, it's got a banner, HRC Honda Racing, just so it's identifiable later when people are looking for it on the digital record, thank you, Attorney Medina.
Had you ever been in that garage prior to Mr. Hatstat's ownership?
I have not, no.
Did you know what it looked like prior to?
Uh, I reviewed the photos that Mr. Hatstat shared.
And it's been markedly improved as a garage.
Uh, I don't, I don't really know how to respond to that.
Well, let me show you a picture of that garage of the same location.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, no, no, yeah, I guess, yeah.
Is this already in the digital record?
Yes.
May I see? So, and, okay, so for the record, this is a photograph of a.
Pre-existing.
Pre-existing, so this was.
Prior location, same.
Same location, prior time, is what you're saying. Um, and is included in the digital record, it looks to be. Um, and is included in the digital record, it looks to be, there's a photograph with a garbage can in it.
And the the outside condition of that location, you've seen it, correct?
Um.
The outside of four forty-one.
Yes, yeah.
You saw the mulch, you've seen it's painted, you've seen that.
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't look abandoned anymore, does it?
Uh, I wouldn't say that it necessarily looked abandoned then, it was just, you know, being used in a different way.
It's being used in what way?
Uh, I, I, I don't know, it's, it's just another use, I, I'm not.
Are you suggesting you're not aware that it's being used as a garage?
No, I'm, I, I meant the prior use, I wasn't here when it was before Mr. Hatstat owned it.
Oh, no, I'm talking about now.
Yeah.
What it looks like now.
Uh, I'm sorry, say that question again.
How it looks now.
How does it look now?
Right, with the mulch and everything cleaned and.
I, I don't, I, it looks like a garage, I don't know.
Does it look like a blight location?
No.
You sure?
You know, I'm not a blight, I'm not the blight enforcement officer, I don't generally make that determination, so, um, but, uh, there's no active blight file on it.
Okay. There is no active blight file, correct?
No.
There's been a, a lot to do about two cars Mr. Hatstat owns located at that location. Is that correct?
Uh, they were, they were mentioned in the police report.
Okay.
For the police, uh, email summary.
Does the fact that those cars are there overnight mean that he's living there?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Have you asked the neighbors, have any of the neighbors allowing to stay in their house at night?
Uh, I, I have not followed up with neighbors on that, no.
So, in conclusion, because I've taken a lot of your time, what you have right now is the use of that four forty-one as a mailing address to support your position that it's a, it's his residence.
Uh, and, and that he's using it as his legal documented residence on his public documents.
I'll hand you that. You're saying that he's using that address as his address?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the basis for, you, you're saying he's living there?
Not the entire basis, I've been.
Okay.
I haven't observed him sleeping there, but the remainder of the evidence seems to suggest that he is living there.
Can you take me through it? I'm, I'm confused. What other evidence shows that he's living there?
Uh.
Other than the address that you said on the license, what other evidence? Is there a ta, is there a kitchen table in that location?
I mean, it's, that's irrelevant since.
What is relevant?
The fact that we have no other, he has not provided any other residence in which, location that he lives.
So.
And that he owns this property and is using it for all of his communications. He's been observed there. Uh, it's the, it's the, the sum of, of everything that we've submitted.
He's been observed there, you've said that several times. Is there a crime or a violation of anything to be on your property at any time?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. I'm not, I'm going to stop there and I'll, I'm going to continue with questions as witnesses come on. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions from the commission?
Is this just for him, for Mr. Hatstat as well?
Um, it's, um, he'll be coming up to do his side, that was really just his questioning of the, uh, ZO, and then we can start with the rest of it. Okay. Um, so I think what we'll do, thank you, Attorney Medina, um, I'll allow, remember, how does this normally go? Uh, Jeremy, if I can defer to your, a question to you, do we? Yep. Then allow. Okay, so, um, so we'll allow for the public comment now. Um, and what I'll ask you to do is as you come up, uh, please identify yourself for the record, uh, name and address, and then, um, we can hear what you have to say on the matter. It seems, okay, okay. Hi, you may, you, you can begin.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Teeman. I live at four fifty-one Oak Avenue, right next door to the garage. I've lived at that location for forty-five years. And all that time, I have never complained to the city of Torrington about anything. In August of twenty twenty, Mr. Hatstat moved into the garage at four forty-one Oak and lived there for over eight months. In March of twenty twenty-one, for other reasons, which his lawyer has stated, um, and Mr. Cyrus, um, he was arrested for failure to register as a sex offender because he was living at four forty-one Oak Avenue. He did start to, at that point, he did leave and started to reside for a few hours each night at one twenty-seven Mondry Road until he was evicted in April, late March, early April of twenty twenty-three. He again moved into the garage and has lived there ever since. From the time we left the meeting on December eleventh until nine days later, I have video cameras for security, which I bought because of my fear. Um, I take twenty-four seven, I have the SIM card with me for nine days. His vehicles never left, and if they did, they were only for a couple of hours. He is living there, my neighbors see him there. He, I, I don't know what else to say. Um, that, that's the only subject that we're here for. Um, i- if, if he had a business and he was, uh, and he had, um, proof that he lives somewhere else and he filed that proof and just simply said, this is where I live, this is my address, this is where I, I go every day, the, the, here's, here's where I work. We wouldn't be here. My concern is the fact that our neighborhood is putting up with this and has been for quite a while. And I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, you know, I'll be happy to answer them, but.
Okay. First, what I'll ask is do the commission members have any questions for Mr. Teeman? And then online, um, Carrie? Or Chris, I can't see you on here, but I don't know if you have any questions.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Chris, go ahead.
Um.
Is that, is that Chris?
No, this is Rusty.
Uh, Rusty, now, we're, we're not doing questions yet, we're going to, uh, you're a member of the public, correct?
Yes.
All right, so there'll be a time for you to, to testify and ask and do things, just, uh, for the time being, it'll be the commission members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm hearing no questions from the, um, board. Um, Attorney Medina, you're, you're permitted to ask questions through the chair. I, I'd like you to ask me the question, if you have a question about what her testimony was, and then, no questions, okay? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Teeman.
Oh, my name's, uh, Max Teeman. Uh, I am Mr. Teeman's son. I live about seven houses down the street. I'm there every day, multiple times. Uh, he absolutely definitely lives there. He's there mostly twenty-four hours a day. Uh, smoke is all night long. Uh, you can see in the garage when he opens it. It's blatantly obvious that he's lived there for most of the time. And since that's the only really relevant issue, that's what I have to say. So, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
When you say that you've seen, you, when he opened the garage and you see, what, what are you saying? Can you give us a little more context?
You can't really see, uh, specific items. I mean, it's wall-to-wall junk and, and it's just, you know, it's hard to even see, you can move around in there, but, and the outside is definitely blight.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Teeman, you know, you said it's blatantly obvious that he lives there.
Yes.
What makes it blatantly obvious? What are some things that make it blatantly obviously he lives there?
That he won't leave the residence for three, four, or five days at a time, not even to go anywhere. Uh, I mean, there's video footage of him never leaving the residence for days at a time. If he does leave, it's for a half an hour. You can clearly see him come back with food or drink and just go back inside. Uh, the video footage of, uh, the lawyer alluded to the fact that it didn't mean much, but he can't leave the residence or enter it without it being on the video. Unless he's knocked a hole in the concrete wall in the back, it's impossible. So, like I said, just being there every day, it's his home. There's, he has four cars, sometimes one of which works, and they're there all the time, at all times, all night long. If you go there any time of the night, they're, they're all there. And you see him come out in the morning and.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Carrie or Chris?
Um, this is Chris, a couple of questions. One is, how could we determine that he lives there if we inspected the interior? And would they allow us to do that?
Yeah, that's in the way of a site visit. Um. I guess, uh, Chris, we'll have to get back to you on that question.
The, 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 the board can do site walks, just like any other commission. If they want to, they just have to determine if it's, determine if it's relevant or not when the, when the hearing's over at the end.
Okay, well, well, um, Chris, we're going to put that on the list of things to discuss at the end about a site walk. Thank you for raising it. And then, uh, Attorney Medina, I guess right now I'll have you ask questions of Mr. Teeman if you, through the chair, and then, then you can address the question of this. Okay. Then, did you have any questions for Mr. Teeman?
Teeman. Son. Son.
Oh, I, I'll get up, I'll get up, yeah. I apologize.
Uh, I, I already said, well, makes it blatant, do you want me to repeat it?
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I live right down the street, about seven houses down the road, and I'm there multiple times a day. There are many people who are going to testify that his vehicles never leave. He stays there for three, four, or five days at a time. Uh, this has been going on for many, many, many months. It happened before. Uh, it's just, you know, when, when you live in a neighborhood and you see people in their homes, you know that they live there by their behavior. He goes outside, he's there all night long, uh, being there constantly is someone who lives there. If it's just his job.
So if he has a job, that would blow a big hole in your.
No, not at all, it doesn't, it, the, the fact that he apparently runs a business out of there is irrelevant.
Oh, no, no. I said, if he has a job outside of that location, that would, you wouldn't.
That's also.
You would say that's impossible, is that correct?
No, I'd say that's also irrelevant.
How is it irrelevant? You just said that he's always there and he never leaves there.
Right.
How is it irrelevant?
I don't understand.
Did you?
He's had jobs in the past, there are times where he has employment, I assume, but there are huge chunks where he never leaves.
Attorney, Attorney Medina.
And he never leaves.
I'm going to pause your, Attorney Medina, because you're doing that thing again where you.
Yeah.
Talk over what he's saying and.
Yes, you're very rude.
I'm very rude.
Very.
I apologize, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just trying to get to the basis for your statements. And your statements are that he never leaves, and I said to you, if he has a job that he works in another town and he leaves to go to that job, wouldn't that be inconsistent with your conclusion?
Does he fly? I don't understand.
That's rude. I'm asking you a question.
Well, I already said.
Answer is.
I already said that there are times where he has a job and times where he's seen to leave and come and go like, like normal people going to work and back. There are, but then there are also months at a time where he doesn't do that.
So you're there all the time?
No, this is, uh.
What am I doing?
Conglomeration of many people's information.
I'm only asking you.
Fine.
I'm not asking you to tell me about everyone else.
I cannot attest to the fact that he's there twenty-four hours a day, no. But this is, this isn't a court of law.
How often are you there?
Multiple times a day.
Now, what would you say multiple times? Give me an example.
Actually, there at my mother's house at least once a day, driving by four or five.
So you don't have a job?
Yeah, I work at home, right on the street.
Okay, down the street. So when you work at home, you're there from what time to what time?
Sometimes I don't leave.
Wait a minute. How do you look at that property if you don't leave your house?
But I also live there, openly, I'm admitting to you that I live there. That's the difference.
What, what, the question isn't who's admitting? The question is, how are you observing that property if you're not leaving your house?
Well, I didn't say it was every day. You said I worked at home, I do. There are, there are times where I don't leave the house.
So, uh, no further question, and thank you for your, that's fine.
My name's Dave Schaller. I live at two Perkins Street, unit seven. I'm seventy-seven, I'm retired. I come and go all hours of the day and all hours of night. And there's weeks and weeks on end where the vehicles never move. And I could, that I can vouch for. So, you know, don't know what else to say other than, you know, there's three, four, or five days in a row, none of those vehicles will move. So, any questions?
Any questions for the board? Chris or Carrie online? No, Attorney Medina, you could ask the, well, I'm going to ask you this time, Attorney Medina, just to reduce the, um, level of fun. If you can ask the board the question, ask the chair the question, and then I can, uh, ask. So Attorney Medina is asking if the fact that the vehicles don't leave, draw any conclusion as to the fact that he lives there?
If the vehicles, your vehicle doesn't leave your house and you're in there, that's a safe conclusion. If you're going to go anyplace, you're going to go in a vehicle.
Good. So Attorney, Attorney Medina is asking if you can call an Uber, a friend, or a cab to pick you up?
That's right, because during the winter time, you, you don't even see footprints. It'll be two or three days before he even cleans the yard out.
Attorney Medina is asking if you're saying it's blighted.
If you don't clean your driveway, it's not a blight.
The question is, if the cars are parked there and you don't move, why would you clean your driveway?
If you don't move the dri, if you don't clear your driveway and the vehicles don't move, you can only assume that you must be staying inside.
Uh, Attorney Medina, I was just pause you one second. Um, Chris, did you, um, just say something? Are you able to hear, okay? I saw you said something on the screen.
I'll reserve my comment.
Thanks, bye. So Attorney Medina is asking if you're assuming that he's living there because the cars don't move.
Pardon?
Attorney, Attorney Medina, I'm just going to, is, I know it's a little bit cumbersome, I know it's cumbersome. If you could, uh, Mr. Schaller, if you could use the microphone when you're, when you're answering the questions, because we're reading into a record here.
Okay.
It's going to be a, uh, recording of all this. Um, so Attorney Medina, can you repeat your question to me? So Attorney Medina is asking, is it an assumption if the cars don't move that he's living there?
Yes. I can't hear you.
He's asking if that's the only basis that you have.
That and the fact that I've seen him go in and I've seen him stay in there for two or three days before he moves his vehicles or leaves. And I live right down the street. And like I say, I'm in and out all hours of the days and night. I don't sit in front of his house and watch. But based on, you know, three years of this, you know, this, this was what I see.
Good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Schaller.
Hi, my name is Tracy Payne. I reside at four eighteen Oak Avenue. I've been there since 2007. Um, when it comes to say, to whether or not Gary is living there, he definitely is living there. Um, our home is diagonally, uh, across the street from him. I work from home. My window to my computer where I sit from seven thirty AM to about five or six PM is actually, like, it looks right on over to, to Gary's house. And I am on calls and I look, I can look at any time during the day and look over. In fact, his building appears in my team's videos, which is not very nice for me because his painted building is checkered. Um, and he has two unregistered vehicles in his, um, in his driveway. So I wanted to share that first. Um, I never see any cars go there and pick him up. So talking about Ubers, I've never seen that. Um, I don't hear it and I hear when there's doors closing. Um, so I would actually be able to hear, um, if somebody is, if there's a car that's going over there. Um, and I probably would notice it as well. Um, so there's no friend that comes to pick him up. There's no walking around, except he does stay in his, his driveway when he's, he's there. Um, but I don't ever see him walking around, walking to any destination point. So when I see that his car is there, to me, that means that he's there. Um, and we, my husband and I, we both see his, his comings and goings. And we're very aware of when he's coming and going, um, because it's something that really irritates us. If it was just a business, that would make us very happy, but that's not the case. So that, I mean, just leaving it as a business and not living there would be ideal. Um, my husband actually was, uh, at one point, um, he was, he was, I guess you'd say kind of friends with, with him, with Mr. Hattstat. Um, and they, they actually, he actually was with him when they bought the futon to bring for him to sleep in that, uh, location. And yes, if you try to go in there, you will not be let in there. So nobody that goes there is going to be able to go in. He will not let you in. Um, even people that come, like, that I have, we have seen people who, I don't know if it's a drug transaction, what it is. Um, but some people who have come there and then leave quickly, um, I just lost my train of thought really quickly. Um, oh, he, he doesn't let them in. He won't let them come in there. Um, and I will say recently, um, we did notice, I would say maybe the past like week or so, that he's been starting his vehicle at like six forty-five in the morning and he's leaving about seven, uh, o'clock in the morning. The exact time that he comes back home, I don't know. Frequently, he comes back with twisted tees. Um, and I don't think normally a business you, you would do that. Um, let's see. Um, and the pictures that you saw on the website, that was actually, um, when he first was in there, when he first moved in, and it was very nice. It was very clean. He worked on it a lot. Um, right now, if you're able to get a glimpse of anything in the garage, you will see, I think there's 30 bikes, like, all the way to where the garage is, where the front door is, where you go in is where the futon was before. And he actually cooked on the wood stove before with a can. We actually, I think somewhere we'd see a Hormel, um, chili can that he actually put on that stove and he actually put a steak flat on the stove that my husband saw with his own eyes. Um, so yes, there is cooking that barely goes on in there. Um, but he definitely is living there because we've been there for so long, we can see, you know, if he's there, he's not there. We hear it. His truck, he is very loud, so he makes it very obvious when, when he's leaving or coming and going. So we can hear it. Um, and something that actually really is something that, like, I, I don't know if everybody's kind of missing this point, but it really, really is confusing how, how it's, I mean, it's hard for all of you all to see what, that he's living there because he's not gonna tell you. He's going to lie and say, of course, I don't live there. Why would he tell you the truth? So, I mean, that's basically he, um, where was he? Oh, so if he had, is registered on the sex, uh, sex offenders, sex offender registry in Woodbury as a person who had, is homeless. It takes like a half an hour probably to drive there. When, how would he do, do that without his car? Um, why would he do that when he actually has a place that he can sleep? Why wouldn't he just tell us if he's living somewhere else? That would be great, but we don't see that. We don't see him bringing in, um, you know, anything like that he was somewhere else and bringing back, like, you know, backpack or something coming back in. We never see anything like that coming or going. Um, but anyways, the, the fact that he's showing as being a registered sex offender out of compliance in Woodbury as a homeless person and he owns this garage, common sense is that he's going to sleep there. So, and we know when he's coming and going, for the most part, we don't watch him every second of the day, but it's something that we're aware of, because if it was just a business, that again, would make us very happy. But he, it's, it's right now, you know, him, um, sleeping there, again, he's not gonna tell you. So I, I think it is very difficult for anybody to prove that. Other than we see it, we see his comings and goings. Um, again, we don't see any Ubers or we don't see any friends picking him up. He's not walking any with a destination anywhere. Um, so for my purposes and my husband's, we think he's still in there because I don't know where else he would be. Um, let's see, am I missing? And also the police obviously know that he, um, is lying because they also have, I think in one of those reports, there was like, I don't remember how many occasions they said, they said they went by on many, many, many occasions. I wonder if it's something like 40 or, or four, I don't know if it's longer than that. But that, I think there's only two occasions that they didn't see any of his, his vehicles. And it's his current active vehicle is his red truck. The other ones don't work. So, yeah, I'm just, I just wanted to make my comments and actually, I don't have any, anything else.
Okay. Um, does the board have any questions? I, I have a question. Um, how many vehicles do you see being dropped off at the location to be worked on? Like cars or motorcycles or?
It's extremely rare. Um, we can hear a lot of, um, like basically he makes it very obvious when he's working not on cars, um, but on like small equipment, like, um, backpack lowers, where we've had some occasions that it was purposely left running for four hours, refilled with gas cans with gas to let it just run. So we know when he's there. Um, but it's very, very, I mean, I don't really see it. And, and there's no room in his garage to physically work because it's all loaded up with, with all these other vehicles that are his. And he has a, a Instagram account, which I don't think he's supposed to have because he's a sex offender. Um, but he has pictures when he goes to, to, uh, purchase some, some motorcycles. Um, so I believe that all those are his. I do know, my husband can actually probably attest to more of that. Um, but I do know of one person that actually brought a bike and he, it took, I think it was there for like six to nine months and there was no work that was completed on it. So they asked for their vehicle and all the parts back. So, yeah, I don't, I don't really see that.
Good. Um, thank you. Uh, any questions from the board based on the question? Chris or Carrie, any questions from you online?
No.
No. Okay. All right. So, um, Attorney Medina, do you have any questions to the board? Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there any bells for public comment? Hearing nobody in the room. We do have some people online. Um, I believe we've got, uh, I know Rusty, you had tried to ask a question earlier, so I'll begin with you if you'd like, if you, um, want to address the.
Yes, I, I just had a question if, um,
You identify, can you identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Rusty Shackleford.
And what's your address, Rusty?
Uh, I'm currently homeless.
It's Shapford, S-H-A-P-F-O-R-D, or how do I spell it?
Shackle, S-H-A-C-K-L-E-F-O-R-D.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Um, regardless if, uh, he is living or not living at that address, um, would it be permitted or permissible if there was a recreational vehicle that was parked at his legal place to work on that he could potentially reside at or in?
So your question, let me clarify your question. So your question is if the property is owned by, Mr. Hattstat and he, but he lived in a vehicle on the premises. You're asking if that is something that's allowed?
Correct.
Um, I don't know if we.
So if we're talking about an RV, a standard RV, they're allowed to be occupied for two weeks out of every year? Um, that's, that's for, that's in place for like guests when people visit, like somebody, they can reside in their RV for a couple of weeks, but that's the extent of it unless it's in an RV park.
Got it. But what about someone possibly living in their car? Is there, is that illegal?
Well, uh, we don't come across that much on private property, but, um, but it would work in the same vein as the, as the RVs. You're not, you're not allowed to occupy um, a vehicle on, residences have to be on a, on a permanent foundation is.
It's not, but it's not a residence, though, if it's a, a place of business, quote unquote, so, um, but there are plenty of people that are hard up that do live in their vehicles in this town, all over town, as you guys would know if you have been around.
And, and, um, Mr. Shackleford, uh, that's really not what, technically so far in the testimony, it's not really before, before the board today. And it's not our position as the Zone Board of Appeals to, um, determine the legality or illegality of, of, um, supposed or, you know.
Understand.
You know, what if, um, so do you have any questions on this specific, um, matter or any comments on this specific matter before the board today?
Just that if it was legal or illegal to, um, potentially sleep in your vehicle on your own private property, not inside of a building. So that the, the building would not be, um, occupied as a residency furthermore than parking your vehicle in the driveway and potentially taking a nap in your car.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comment. Um, any questions based on that? We didn't know. Okay. Thank you for your comment, uh, Rusty. Any other individuals on the online platform that would wish to speak? Or asking? Okay. Hearing no one. Okay, I think. Attorney Medina, do you have other things to present to the board? For your part, because I believe he does have an opportunity to present something. So Attorney Medina, if you'd like to address the board. Attorney Medina will need you up at the, or using a microphone at the least.
May I call you, Tim? Yes. Tim, uh, what's your relationship to, uh, four forty-one?
Pause you one, one second. If you could identify yourself for the record, only because it didn't make it into the.
Yes. My name is Timothy Allenworth. And what was your question again? So my relation with four forty-one Gary Hattstat is that ever since I was in high school, when he first bought the building, right, I'd get off the bus, I'd see him coming home from work. Because at the time he was doing, for several years, he was doing, um, landscaping. And I'd get off the bus, I'd see him going to, coming from work, he'd get dropped off by his boss. So of course, vehicles aren't leaving the driveway if his boss is dropping him off. And then I seen he had a pile of wood sitting there and it didn't move for two, two weeks or so. So I walked up to him and asked him if he wanted someone to split the wood for him. And that night, it was like six o'clock, sun didn't, went down at like seven o'clock and I split half the pile of wood. And then while he was off at work the next day, I finished the rest of it because I, I was just trying to help him out. Because I see that, like, so also before I even went down there, I had, I was living with my cousins at three thirty-eight Oak Ave, uh, right across the street from the ballpark. So, and my cousin was ten, twelve years old at the time. And he had like fifteen kids that were riding their bicycles around there and they'd all hang out, saw the bikes, was all interested. And he had all these kids hanging out down there. And it was, it was mostly my family. Well, I'd say half of it was my family.
Can I pause you for one second? I've lost track of the question. Can you re-ask the question?
He asked what my relationship is with him.
With four forty-one?
With, yeah.
Four forty-one Oak Avenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I've known him for about three and a half years. So I'm, I'm just starting from the beginning, just trying to push through it real quick. So I was in high school. I, I started off with asking if he want, I started off with asking him if he wanted someone to split the wood. And from then on, he liked how I did it. So I continued working with him. We'd hang out, the kid, he'd always fix my cousin's bikes if anything happened, whether it was a broken chain, flat tire, whatever. He was always happy to help the neighborhood out. Um, it started off with, most of the work was, we were just cleaning up around, you know, blowing the road off, keeping it dirt free, grass free, trimming up the corner, whatnot, making properties look nice. Um, what's that road net that goes up the dead end? Marvin Street? We do just about almost how every house on Marvin Street for free, just to help the neighbors out. And, yeah, that, that's how it all started. And, um, he, he really got me into the bikes further. I mean, I was raised by bikers and like bike clubs and whatnot, so I was familiar with it. But as far as like the off-roading aspect of it, he got me into that. We'd go to races almost every year and whatnot. So, you know, we just like, we, we became close friends just from starting a little business transaction and helping my cousins out. And I've been in every inch of that building. I've been in the attic. I've been in the garage part. There's, as they said, there's a lot of bikes in there. There's not much room. So there, there's definitely no living quarter. There's that one futon mattress which has all his paperwork and stuff on it. But other than that, there, there's nowhere to lay down so much. Like, you could barely sit. You're, he stands at the bench and works at the bench the whole time. Any small motors, chainsaws, whatever. I mean, they're as small as this desk, you could stuff it on a nightstand. You know what I mean? Like, you don't need much space. And that's why he hasn't been doing those big projects, because he has no space to do a big project. But, um, other than that. Yes, chainsaws, weed whackers, leaf blowers, snow blowers, anything small, anything two-stroke, he, he's fixing. No, no. I mean, so that, for example, they said, uh, Ms. Teeman's, what, what would you, no, the group of them, what would you, could, could this? Um, okay. So they said that he never leaves and nobody picks him up. They never see cars driving here. The last hearing that we was here, I drove him here. Like, and they never see cars going there between the last hearings? He drove me this time because I actually got in an accident at the Five Point Gallery right in front of it. And the first place I went was to his shop. He checked out my label, made sure it was gonna make it home. I got it back to Nagatuck and that was that. And then that, that, so that's why he's driving me today, but I pick him up personally and one of the friends that pick him up. So I, I, that's why his car does not leave is because he does in fact have people that pick him up. I don't personally work on them. I, I watch him work on them so that I can get the experience, but yes, he does work on them.
Does the board have any questions for the witness? No.
Go ahead.
Chris or Carrie? Okay. I think you're free. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay.
Okay. Um, I'm Michelle Cullen. I live at twenty-seven Marvin Street.
Nice, spell your last name, Michelle.
What, uh, C U L L E N.
Thank you.
Um, I'm his neighbor on the left side. Um, as far as him living there, he is not living there. He has a key to my house and he can come and go as he wants. He sleeps there, he um, showers, uses the bathroom sometimes. He's allowed there whenever he wants. He, he works late sometimes in the garage and he comes up to my house late too, but that's not a big deal, cause I'm always awake. Um. I don't know. Okay.
So um, you state that Mr. Has that has a key to your house?
Yep.
Um, what door is it to?
It is to the front door.
And then how many doors do you have at your house?
Um, on, uh, four.
For the exterior?
Yeah.
Does the same key work on all doors?
No.
Is it one family or two family?
It's one family.
And then is, does Mr. Has to have a separate room or space, or where does he sleep?
Yeah, there's his own, own bed for him.
And how long have you known Mr. Has that?
Um, since he's moved into the garage.
So since he purchased the garage?
Yeah, since he per, yeah, yeah, I'm not moved in.
And do you know any of your neighbors?
Yeah, I know all my neighbors.
Okay. Do you communicate with them often?
Yeah.
Have you told any of them that Mr. Has that resides at your property?
Um, yes, my one neighbor next door knows.
And does Mr. Has that pay you any rent or?
No.
Any other board members have questions?
Does he get mail at your address?
No.
Yeah, how many days a week would you say he visits your home?
Um, it depends. I mean, sometimes it's almost every day.
And at what lengths or what periods of time is he typically there and for how long are, in duration is his stay?
Um, it's usually overnight. Overnight until like very early in the morning.
Do you have any idea of what hours usually comes and goes?
Um, no, it depends. Um, sometimes he could show up late, you know, one, two, three o'clock in the morning. Um, I'm awake, so it's not a big deal. Um, and then he'll leave sometimes really early in the morning, six, seven o'clock in the morning.
And how far is your residence from his garage?
I'm right next door.
Okay, so you're the adjacent property?
Yes, yes.
And so how did you initially meet and how did this arrangement kind of come up?
Um, well, when he first brought the garage, I believe he came up to all of us on Marvin Street and introduced himself and um, yeah, I mean, we immediately hit it off and became good friends and he's good friends with my husband and so we had no issue with, of him staying with us at all.
Would you characterize Mr. Hatstat as living at your residence?
Um, I guess, yeah.
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Chris or Carrie, do you have any questions?
Uh, this is Chris. Um, does he cook there? Does he store food there?
Um, yes, he does. He has food he could cook whenever he wants.
Okay, um, just to follow up on that, what, can you specify what, um, give me an example of what kind of food he stores there?
Um, sometimes I'll have like frozen stuff in the freezer that I'll microwave and eat.
Can you state your address one more time for me so I can write it down?
Twenty-seven Marvin Street.
Thank you.
Uh, believe there, um, somebody indicated a question, you could ask it through the chair, so you could ask me the question and then I can, and then I can relate. Um, I'll, I'll repeat it, so you can, you can. So I guess the question, I'll read it into the record is just, if he is considered a resident at your address, um, shouldn't he be registered there as a sex offender? And getting mail and everything was also asked.
Other questions for me?
Yes, yes.
Um, oh, um, he just left, it was his business address and he left. His mail was still all going there, so he just left it that way. He never changed it to my address. I don't know what it mattered if he was getting mailed it down right next door or around our house.
I have another question, actually. Uh, what was the date that he started visiting your home and using it as a residence?
Um, up in the uh, back in the beginning of January of last year.
So January of twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-three.
Or New Year.
Um, give me one second here. Do you have any other questions? Um, to follow up on that. Uh, you can once again ask through the chair. Yes. That's not a question, that's a statement. Are you gonna, have you come up to speak? Um, have you, have you been up yet to speak, ma'am? Now, okay, so, so that's something you can, um, well, can come up and, and and testify to, not right now, not at, at this instant, the um, the, are there any other questions, um, I guess, from the board or, um? Okay. Um, I can take one more, uh, question, Ms. Tean, you can ask through the chair. Okay, so I guess the question, um, I'll, I'll rephrase it with your permission, is, is why um, hasn't, why hasn't this information been provided before, um, before now? I, I don't know if that is a good question for you.
Yeah, I know, would it be, I have no idea what the answer is to that.
Okay, alright. Um, any other board questions?
When did you, um, purchase the residence or start living there yourself?
Um, two thousand twenty, no, I'm sorry, two thousand three?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Attorney Medina, do you have any other?
Can I say one more thing?
You can.
I, I believe it was April last year that he started, um, staying with us. I know it was the beginning of last year.
Okay.
No.
Attorney Medina, I'll ask you to ask questions into the, the record, sorry.
He's a friend. Yeah, no, he's just a friend, yeah, he, no, he doesn't stay there all the time.
Okay.
He has a key to come and go as he wants.
Okay, and it's not his residence?
No, I guess not, no.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Attorney Medina, do you have any other? Okay. Attorney Medina, do you want to bring a chair over to the, to the spot over here, or you could even use the microphone, I think, maybe your chair, technically.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Has that.
Good evening.
How many places have you lived at in the last five years?
Uh, at least a dozen.
And you've heard, uh, uh, the uh, testimony that, uh, you're using four forty-one as your mailing address, is that correct?
Correct.
And is there, to the best of your knowledge, has anybody said you can't use as your mailing address?
No.
Has the court said you can't use it as your mailing address?
No.
Has anybody sat down and talked to you about that address?
No.
Attorney Medina, I'm a little concerned that your questions are not making it into the record, cause I'm not catching them.
Closer.
Go ahead.
Has anybody talked to you since this, this whole?
It's muted.
Um, no.
Still no? It's like I go like this, huh?
If you hold it by the, the, the neck, there, there you go, yeah.
Let me ask the question so that it gets in. Has anybody talked to you since this process started back in twenty twenty?
Talked to me as far as what?
Are you living there?
Well, I've had the police come ask questions, but no.
From zoning.
They've been there as well.
And has anybody come inside?
Yeah.
Has anybody found that you were living there?
No.
Are you living there?
No.
A lot of people don't like you, is that true?
Well, I think it's because of my record, to be honest with you.
I understand that, but you're not here to be judged, you're here to fight a zoning change.
Correct.
So we're not gonna talk about that.
Correct.
We're just gonna focus on whether you're living at that address.
Correct.
Now, why have you used four forty-one as your mailing address?
Because of the amount of moving that I've done, obviously with my record, it's difficult to maintain, you know, uh, residents. And um, I had the mail, you know, obviously going to where I was living because of the regulations. But I would keep all my like, you know, electric bill, registrations, I would always keep that at four forty-one, cause I know my mail would always be there.
I'm gonna ask you, has anybody made a recommendation to you that you get a P O box?
Yes.
Isn't that a good idea?
Well, I don't know, maybe.
It costs money, but it's not a lot of money.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I could do that.
I know you can't use it for your driver's license.
Correct.
But there's no, that I know of, no, as Department of Motor Vehicle said, you can't use that as your?
No, I don't think they can.
Okay, and the only reason you're using, cause you, it, you move, you're moving so often.
Yeah, and I just want my mail to stay with me, not be in the hands of somebody else that gets the mail, you know?
Are you working?
Yes.
Where?
I work for a crane company doing, um, an office manager and I, and I manage the warehouse, Prospect, Connecticut.
Prospect, Connecticut, yeah. And what else do you do?
I work on my, my bikes at night, work on the building, you know, just trying to make it better. Eventually, when I pursue the business, I haven't pursued it because of this, these, these claims. You know, it's kind of taken the wind out of my sails, to be honest with you, because what motivation would I have to want to pursue it if I'm always being threatened with my zoning? You know, I work at night, that's the only time I can work there. And I have to work twice as hard as the next guy because of my record to make something of my life. And that's, I've worked myself to death.
I have a question, can I ask him a question?
Um, yeah, just when you're doing it, just say your name and then you can ask the question.
Alright, Randy Stelma, so there's, even during the testimony, you made a comment about the license and the address, and you said the DMV tell him that he can't use the address. So you're a lawyer, you probably know better than me, can you use your, can your address on your license officially not be your address of your residence?
The Department of Motor Vehicle's only concern is that you are able to get the mail. And then if you change, they'd like to have your residence, but in his case, it would be moving, every time you move, you have thirty to sixty days to change your address. So just imagine how often he'd be changing his address at this point. So that's, that's the dilemma he's faced with. Now, for those of us who don't have the problem he has, and it's a difficult use our home address, but when you're constantly moving, it's a problem.
Are you registered to vote?
Yes.
What's your address for that?
Um, well, I got a letter that I'd have to re-register, so I guess technically right now, I'm not.
What address are you living at now?
I'm technically homeless. But I stay with friends at any time. I'm not living in my garage. And I work there at night and it, you could see the work with the photos. Most of those are before and after, taken from the same location. So it isn't like the, the shop just magically appeared by itself. I work full-time and I work there at night. And any other free time I've got, I work there. And anybody that ever drives by there will see me working, they know that, it's, it's a big improvement from what it was. And it was a lot of work.
I want to clarify for the record. The board has the ability to look at all the, all the pictures, the before and after pictures online, but we don't have them here. Um, I have them, but I only have one copy. Um, but um, zoning has already indicated that they're online. I welcome you to come out and I welcome you to see it, because if you see it, you know, no one could live there. It's not a, it's a workshop.
Right. And just for the record, the, um, online, uh, database as of today's date is available to the board members and has been kind of incorporated into the record here by reference. Quick question, so, so I understand the concept of, of finding housing with um, a record like that is difficult, but why is it hard to keep the housing once you've found it?
Um, problems, I mean, most of the places have is like renting rooms out, and there's a lot of problems with people that are just drunk all day and drugs and the police are there, not for me, but it's just issues like that. And um, that's been the main thing, is getting a place, you, you're gonna be living in the dumps. Basically, you know, you're not gonna be anywhere nice with my record. So, yeah, I'm pretty much living at the bottom of the barrel, you know?
Let me clarify that for you. Um, let me ask the question. Where you're living, most people wouldn't want to live.
No, no.
I'm not sure all your questions are making it to the record, but I'll let you keep asking them however you want. I'm just warning you that when you're not holding that up to your mouth, you're not, you're not getting in.
Locations where you are finding places that'll accept you.
Right.
Are not the best places in the world.
No.
Okay.
No.
And you wouldn't want to get mailed there, would you?
No, that's, that was the problem, they would lose it or it wouldn't be there, especially like a registry letter or something. You know, you got eight people, one house was, at least eight people, the guy rented his couch out to somebody who was living on the couch. So, there was a lot of mail there.
Can you, um, tell us some of the addresses that you've lived out of the dozen places in the past five years?
Okay, uh, trying to think, well, I can give you well, thirty-two Overlook Court was one, one twenty-seven Mondry Road was one, there was one in Southbury. One or two in Woodbury. Um, I really can't recall, it was just a, a move, I actually was at thirty-two Overlook Court twice. I went back there because I couldn't find anything else, but the guy was just too much.
Well, what was the address in Southbury or what road?
Um, it was Flood Bridge Road. I think the number was fifty-five, if I recall. And the one in Woodbury, it was, the number was twenty, but I don't remember the road. I could look it up on my phone if you want.
That's, that's okay, the, um, the, I also noticed that on the registry, it said Woodbury, homeless, Woodbury.
Right.
And then it had zero six seven nine zero. Do you know, boy, it, it may not be what you put on there, but.
So, on my license, that was my mailing address. It was never my residence address, that they, that was stated. As well as the registry, I've got my, my four forty-one Oak Ave is a secondary address, just because I spent so much time there, I wanted them to know where I was. And all the addresses I had were always current, and that, even now, I'm still compliant, I do what I. And all the addresses I had were always current, and that, even now, I'm still compliant, I do what I, they'd make me call in every week, just let them know the general area where I'm at, I don't know if they GPS my phone, maybe. But as far as the state's current concerned, I'm all right, you know, and they respect the fact that I'm trying to do something with that building. And it's, it's just that my records, my neighbors have an issue with that, and, you know, I understand it, but you got to understand too that Judge Mattis Savage stated on the record, I paid my debt to society, and that's supposed to mean something. And I feel it, it's just, I should be commended for trying to work as hard as I've done and trying to make something of myself, because it's not easy.
How much time would you say you spend at the, at the garage?
As much as I can, because it, it's not going to happen without me doing it, you know? And it was my dream to build this place, it really was, I conceived the logo with the name, everything, and I made it happen, and then this really just kind of kicked me in the stomach.
I have an awkward question for you, when you're spending so many hours at the garage, where do you use the bathroom?
I use Michelle, Michelle's bathroom quite a bit, and that's pretty much it, literally, I walk up the hill.
Have you ever cooked beans on your wooden stove?
No, I don't remember anything like that.
What was the question?
Asked if you could cook beans on the wood stove, but did you have a question?
So when you go to the shop and you're there till two o'clock in the morning?
Or later.
Or later. You then go back to Woodbury and sleep where?
My car. But like I said, Michelle and her husband and her son, I get along with them great, they're friends. It's so convenient, they're, they're just great people, and it's not my residence, but I could, I could stay there whenever I want, you know, I've never wanted to put that on them as my residence, but I'm sure she would let me.
There was one other residence, the thirty-two Overlook, right?
Right.
And I think that, if my memory is correct, please correct me if I'm wrong, stated that, while you stated that you were there, the owner stated that you were not for months.
Well, he's one of the guys I had a problem with, because when I bought the garage, I was living there, and I was working so much that I was not there that much, you know what I mean? And he wasn't sure what I was going to do, he, I told him, I said, listen, he got drunk.
He got what?
He got drunk, he drinks a bottle of, I don't even know what it is, Jim Beam or something, every day, like a big bottle, comes home from work and that's all he does, and then he just gets crazy, you know, and he actually stated he doesn't remember when I moved out, if you look at the police, police reports, he doesn't even know, he thinks, but that's not, it's not a valid statement, the guy doesn't even know. You know, he was just trying to get me hemmed up because we had an argument, and that was it. But the police have been to that house, you could look it up, I can't even tell you how many times, that's the one where he rented the couch out and everything, he rented the washroom, he had a cot in his washing, the washroom in the basement.
Thirty-two Overlook?
Yeah. And it's like an illegal boarding house, you know? Actually, Danny Payne's the one that found it for me, the gentleman here, he found it online, and that's where I went.
Let me ask you a question. In the time I've known you, what was your profession?
I was a motorcycle manager mechanic at a shop that was in Litchfield.
And that's when I met you twenty years ago?
Correct.
You've known each other for twenty years?
My wife used to work for him.
And then just a point of clarification, because I didn't catch it, when you said earlier, you're, you are an office manager, warehouse, did you say a train company or train?
Train.
Train, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I have no further questions.
Are there any further questions from the board?
Yeah, I have several. So, at this current place of work, when did you start working there?
Recently, I was employed full-time as a landscape leader, I had a crew of guys, the owner passed away. So that was kind of the end of that, and I was transitioning between, I, I was working at the shop more because I had more time, obviously, so that would explain me being there during the day, but it's my business, I can come and go as I please, you know?
So what date did you start working at that job?
Um, a week ago.
And this is the one, and what's the address of this job?
It's ninety-nine Union City Road.
In what city?
That's in Prospect.
How many hours do you work there a week?
Uh, forty.
And you work there physically in person?
Yes.
And what time are you required to check in at work?
Seven-thirty.
And what's your method of transportation to get there?
Um, I use, I've got two vehicles that run and drive, so Volvo or my truck.
So you're taking the Volvo or the truck down to Union City every morning?
Yeah.
And then when do you finish?
Four o'clock, usually.
And then you're coming back home?
Right, well, to the shop, yeah.
So you come to the shop and then you start your work there?
Correct.
And what hours do you work there?
Till I get tired.
Okay, so basically as long as you can, and then?
Yeah.
And then what's your process, where do you go from there?
Rob Michelle's, or like I said, I would go to Woodbury if I had to see somebody, or, you know, I've got family in Woodbury as well, so.
So you either sleep at Michelle's afterwards, or you go to Woodbury to sleep in your car?
Correct.
So how many times a day would you say you come or leave to four-four-one?
It depends, it depends on what day activities I've got, I really can't give you an answer on that.
And prior to your employment there, you were working mainly at your garage?
Yes.
How many hours a week do you think you'd put in at your garage?
Oh, man, I don't know, I would, I trained myself to live on four hours a night, sleep, and that wasn't easy to do, you know, but I did it.
And you claimed before that, at one point you were living in the garage, when did that stop occurring?
Um, I really can't tell you, but I did have that down as a residency at one time.
You had that down?
Few years ago.
Where did you have that down?
At the garage, oh, at the state.
Okay, and, but you actually were sleeping there at some point?
Yes.
In between places?
Yes.
And then that?
Occasionally.
That stopped at some point when you moved addresses?
Found, found people to stay with, found a place, sure.
Did you ever find yourself going back there to, in between your, you know, being homeless, to sleep there?
Not to sleep, to work, like I said, Michelle, she's been a savior, you know, but I don't like to impose too much on people that try to help me out, I just don't like to do that.
So you're claiming your current residence right now is that you're homeless and it's out of your car in Woodbury?
Correct.
Just bear with me while I take some notes for these questions.
Oh, the last thing you said was just bear with him as he takes some notes on this.
Yeah, sorry, I have questions, I was just, I'm taking notes for, write down his answers. So where does your driver's license currently state your address is?
At four-four-one Oak Ave, that's mailing address, that's what I told them.
And you said you've changed addresses twelve times approximately?
Well, maybe a little less, but I, I can't give you the exact number.
Have you ever reported an address change to the US Postal Service or to the DMV?
Yeah.
So they would have record of that?
Yeah, actually, my license, I think, right now says, it's changed to four-four-one, but it still says thirty-two Overlook Court on it, on the front, on the back, it's four-four-one.
Okay, so your most recent address change was from your previous place of residence to four-four-one?
I believe so.
What address is your two thousand and five Volvo and your nineteen ninety-seven Dodge Dakota registered to?
They're both registered at the same four-four-one.
When you file your state and federal taxes, what address have you been using in twenty-twenty-two?
Wherever I was living, I believe. I can't give you the address, I don't recall.
It was stated before that, you know, it's possible that you were taking Ubers or taxis or friends, do you have any documentation of receipts or anything like that?
No, he asked a question, what if Uber, I have a lot of friends that have taken me up, taken me out, spend the night, we go out.
Okay, but, but you're stating, you're stating that you actually drive yourself all these times, that you're coming and going?
No, no, I've been picked up before for work, but for your current job, I just started, I did get, you brought me twice.
So he drove up from Nagatuck to Torrington?
He comes up, he's got family in Torrington, he comes up to see him, he used to live, he lived right down the road, two miles, yeah, he lives right next to it.
So none of that's making it to the record, just for the record, the witness said that he lives in Cheshire, so he drives right up the road.
No, he lives in Nagatuck.
I guess what, what we should do is ask questions of only the person that's up. And that, yeah, yeah. Yep, 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 yeah, you can catch, you can catch that.
Some questions about your business, I have a general understanding of this being used as a business.
Right.
Um, so how do you transact with your customers, do they order online, do they call in, do they visit?
Like, I have not pursued any work because of this, I've just, I just lost the ambition because I'm not sure of the zoning, I don't want to take in work, if it's at a risk for losing zoning, it's crazy.
Okay, so the garage is, it's.
I have a lawnmower that I need, that it blew the engine and I want him to replace it.
Right.
Until this is done, it's not going to get replaced.
Right.
Okay, so you're currently not using it as a garage?
My, my vehicles are in there, I restore my own bikes, I spent at least, I can't even, a hundred thousand dollars on equipment and tools. Tire machines, brand new, balancers, brand new, blasting cabinet, brand new, compressor, everything is top-of-the-line stuff. I got three huge toolboxes full of tools, every air tool in the world, welder, everything, and I just, my ambition is, is low.
So you're not currently using it as a commercial property, you're using?
I'm not taking any business.
As like a personal workshop?
Yes.
So your statements are a little contradictory, because you're saying on one hand that you're going there and working all night and working to make more money and to build things, and then on the other hand, you're saying you're not working there on your business?
No, it isn't, I can't make money on myself, you know what I mean, if they're my bikes and I'm restoring them to keep, how, how am I making money doing that, I'm spending money to do that.
So you're going there during these extra hours, not for business purposes, but to work on your own property?
Correct. You've seen the pictures, you could tell I've got a few bikes.
Do you have any documentation to support you having a different registered, registered address, such as, you know, a utility bill or a lease agreement or any sort of documentation?
Nope, because the rooms I rented were cash and I never got a receipt. And if you look at the, the history of that, that one house, thirty-two Overlook Court, I, I've, the police have been there dozens of times. And it was cash only and no record. And, you know, I've stayed at Ms. Blandino when her husband was alive, he was a friend of mine, actually, I bought, I bought the garage from him. And they knew I needed a place and he invited me up to stay. He passed away and I, I tried to help out his wife as much as I could, working full-time and then trying to take care of the property, and she, she won't lie about that, you know? I tried to do everything I could for her.
Okay, so the evidence I've reviewed so far comes down to videos and personal testimony from neighbors, and then yourself, the positive evidence I have for you of not living there is personal testimony from friends and handwritten letters?
Right.
If anything else?
Well, I'd like to state that her cameras cannot see when I leave out my garage door, which I do, to walk up the hill, I'm, I'm not driving. Her camera cannot see my, my garage door.
I'm not sure if they've changed the law, and obviously I'm not here to enforce the DMV's public statutes, but not reporting an address change, you know, was I say, excitable offense before?
Correct.
Would you say, how would you characterize where you spend most of your time, do you spend most of your time in the city of Torrington?
Yeah.
And you spend most of your time at this address?
Which address?
At four-four-one.
Most of my free time. I mean, it's, I'm trying to build something, you know, it's going to take work.
So your friend who's allowing you to stay there says that you reside there and that you store food there and that you, you know, I assume do you shower there and do all the other living things?
Right, I actually bring food for the family, so it isn't like, you know, it's just my food, I buy what everybody likes and we'll eat, you know?
How many hours a week would you say you stay at that residence?
A week? I don't know, it depends, it's not a set, it's not a set date or time, you know?
So are you primarily walking there and staying there and sleeping there, or are you driving to Woodbury to?
No, I'm, it's right up the hill, you know, and it's convenient, because it's close to where my cars are parked, and I don't have to even start one to get up there.
So the homeowner has stated and then corrected that you were residing there, it seems that you're claiming you're residing there?
No, I'm not claiming that.
Okay, so you're still claiming?
I'm homeless technically, like I stated before.
Okay, and are you, would you say you're homeless in Woodbury or are you homeless in Torrington?
Homeless in Woodbury.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commission, the board? Chris or Carrie, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Just one last question, you are working on small engines, are you not?
Yes.
Getting paid for that?
If I sell them, I haven't sold anything lately.
I'm done.
It sounds like the air turning on sounds like it's peeling out, like a car peeling out.
Last question of the board, does this continue?
Uh, well, I, I don't know, we've got, is there, do you have anything else to?
This is my last witness.
Okay.
And if you're going on to new business, I'd like to leave.
Excuse me, Lou, we've got one more person that wants to speak.
I, I think, what's the, what's the timeframe on the, on the meeting? Okay. Do we need to leave the hearing open though to do a site visit? We do, okay, so what, okay. Okay, so maybe what we'll do is we'll hear from your last witness, and then I'll put it to the board as to whether you want to ask for a site visit and leave the hearing open or if we're assessed by what we've heard and we can close it, so we'll hear from, we'll hear from this one last witness and then we'll?
Okay.
Okay, my name is Ivor Kasioru, I live at thirteen Perkins Street.
Did you say your name one more time, sorry?
Ivor Kasioru, the name is Estonian.
How, how do you spell it, I'm sorry?
Last name spelled K-A-S as in Sam, E-O-R-U, first name spelled with an I, I-V-A-R.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, I want to, like to shed a little bit of light on this situation. I've known Gary for about three or four years, ever since my dear neighbor Bob Blandino passed away, and since he, let me correct that, since he sold the garage to Gary, okay? And all that time, I will say that I've always known Gary to be honest and truthful. So if he says he does not live in that garage, I have no reason not to believe him. Up until a few years ago, twenty twenty-one, I was working in Waterbury for Durham School Services as a master school bus driving instructor. In the morning, I would go by his garage on the way to work, probably anywhere from five-thirty to, let's say, six o'clock. During that time, I never saw anything. During that time, I never saw anything that would indicate that he's living there. I didn't see any smoke coming out of his chimney that I was looking for. But I did not see any lights anywhere that they shouldn't be, such as up on the second floor. I would come back at about maybe five o'clock, six o'clock at, in the evening. And again, I did not see anything which would indicate to me that he was living there. Now, it's my understanding that one of his neighbors was actually a stone's throw away from my house. I believe the name is Liz. That she is one of the people who filed a complaint against Gary. I'd like to state that Gary is not the only one that she's ever had issues with. She had issues with Bob Blandino, the prior owner of the garage. I don't know exactly what they were, but Bob would complain to me at least several times a year that Liz had issues with him and that he needed to make sure he didn't do anything that would irritate her. All right. On a personal note, Liz has also filed a complaint against me. A number of years back, two thousand fifteen, I believe it was. A good friend of mine was working on my barn, doing roofing. Apparently Liz did not like either the volume of the music or the type of music. I was at work at that point. When I came back at the end of the day, at around five o'clock or so, my friend Dave informed me that Torrington PD had been to my house because she had filed a complaint. The officer who, uh, came in, apparently he didn't have a problem with either the volume of the music or the type of music. Nevertheless, he asked Dave to turn the volume of the music down, which Dave did. He complied. But what I'm trying to say is that Gary is not the only one that Liz has had issues with in the past. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions from board? Chris or Carrie?
That's it?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further business for me, I, I have a jury to pick tomorrow.
Okay. Um, the, um, what I'll ask, I, yes?
My, uh, statement that I made was questioned. Mr. Headset said I was safe. He doesn't remember.
That, okay, that's, 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 that's.
I'm with you.
Okay. That's, it's, that's okay. I'm going to ask the parties to, excuse me, excuse me. Um, I'm going to ask where, where, I think we've heard plenty tonight. Is there any, um, move, motion from the board to decide visit or keep the hearing open or any reason to keep the hearing open?
There's, there's been a couple of statements about Ms. Bond, I believe. Um, not her last name. Is this, can she make a statement or can we hear from her? Because there's been multiple contradictory. Yes, ma'am. Can you come forward and state your name and address? I just want to get some clarification from comments about the Mundry address.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Barron. Um, I'm Lois Blandino's daughter and I currently reside with her. Before, um, two thousand twenty-three, Gary was residing with her and it took a year to get him off of her couch. We had to have him evicted. And then from that point on, I'm not sure where he was living, but, um, it, like I said, it took a while to get him off her couch. So, and before that, he used the address of, um, what was it again?
He used the prior address.
No, before that.
Well, I don't know. Well, he overlooked.
Well, the overlook. He's used that at one other time too. And then when you go on to, um, truth finder, you can always, you can see where he's been bounced around. And, um, he'd never received mail at Mundry Road.
Yes, he did.
The one piece, right?
All right. So I'm going to have to ask one of you to go at a time. So, uh, we can.
Okay.
He didn't receive mail from the state of Connecticut.
Okay, can you identify yourself for the record?
Lois Blandino.
Lois Blandino, okay. So you're saying he received mail at one twenty-seven Mundry. Okay.
Oh, what, March, March or April of twenty-three?
And then, uh, Steve, you had a question. You want a clarification on something you said specifically?
Yeah, there was comments made about, you know, the relationship between the husband and kind of an accusation of, you know, she's just blaming everybody in the neighborhood. And they were making motions that it wasn't true. So just wanted to hear from them, you know, if there was a problem.
Did you have a specific question for them, for these witnesses? Did you have a specific question for these witnesses?
Yeah. Is there any clarifications you want to make on the record about anything anybody said about your interaction with Gary?
What was that again?
Is there any clarifications you want to make about interactions between you and Gary that were claimed by other people?
Only that Michelle said he, she, he was staying there last year. He's been at my house for at least two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Um, my question though, I, I guess for my own information is, um, when you have, um, a deed of trust on a building, you can do stuff, stuff like this with it. You're not, it's like he's, it's not fully his garage still because he still pays my mother for this building.
I don't know about the legal status of the title.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
On the property, but if it's a, um, if it's a deed of, a warranty deed and there's just a mortgage on it or something, yeah, you can, um, I don't know. It's, it's, we don't have a copy of the mortgage or the deed, so I can't tell you. I don't know.
Yeah, okay. That was just, uh, information for myself. Thank you.
Thank you. So last question to the board. Any, um, interest or request for the, um, site visit?
Do you have one last question for Gary, if that's possible?
As attorneys left, Gary, are you comfortable addressing a question without your?
Yeah, I just have one last question because I'll wait till you get up there. You made a statement that, uh, the state was cool with you, you know, putting homeless and then, uh, your other known address as four four one. But on the registry, the sex offender registry, it says you're currently non-compliant because you failed to verify address. Are you currently non-compliant?
Yes, but if you call them, they'll explain. So they obviously have a homeless problem with offenders. So I'm, I'm doing what they told me. I call in every week, which I do, give them the status. And they explained to me that they give that, uh, they give that option to somebody that they know is trying to do something, you know? If you're just, um, you'd have to call them to get the explanation, but I've been, I've been compliant with that. And I, please call them and ask them about, every week I do what I got to do according to them.
So you're currently compliant with their request of you updating them on where you are?
Yes, but their, their system is not, I guess, set up for that. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, um, I am, might.
So, yeah, so it's up to the commission whether they think that'll add anything to the case, um, if they want to do a sidewalk. But, you know, like we discussed already, the, the, the hearing would have to stay open, which we're up against. Um, I, I just kind of did some rough math. It's the fourteenth that your thirty-five days are up, um, for the, for the public hearing.
So we probably need an extension of the.
Yeah, if you're going to do a site, if you're going to do a walk.
Something like that. So, you know, um, any thoughts from the board on?
Question for Nate. Um, so the determination you said wasn't going to be made based on physical items located there, but on the evidence that was submitted to make this, um, decision?
Yeah, our perspective is that, you know, we would consider a temporary cot that's being lived in, um, where the, where, you know, someone is occupying it, um, and using it as a residency, has it on their documentation that they're living there. So if you were to remove that cot and they're still listing it as their residence, we're still going to call it a residence, um, because we don't have anything to the contrary.
So because the temporary nature of things being able to be placed and removed, um, the determination you made isn't dependent on objects that are there?
I, I can make a clarification just based on how our regulations read, if you want me to. I, I kind of have it sort of committed to memory. Um, the definition of a residence is, is any single contained area used, arranged, or there's a third one, but it, but used is the operative term here. You don't have to have a, um, it's set up in a certain way. If you're occupying it, using it for that, for that, that's all you need, you know? It's, it's used, arranged, or intended for use as a, as a dwelling.
Now, I just want to note for the record that Attorney Medina stepped in about five minutes ago. So I just want to put that into the written.
Just, just giving you the definition. That's it.
Thank you.
It doesn't technically need to have a kitchen. It doesn't need to have an oven. It could be just the intended purpose of occupying.
No, no, not for, not from a definition standpoint.
My, my question was based on the bearing that whether or not a site visit would change or alter opinions.
Right, right. I mean, I'm, I'm okay without a site visit personally. I don't know if anybody else has a feeling on it. Carrie, I know that you came out of mute for a second and then went back into mute. Did you have an opinion on it?
Oh, I was just going to say that if we had to, um, keep the hearing open, we needed an extension. That's all. And then you guys covered that.
Great. Okay, so I mean, um.
The commission just needs to determine whether the, it's going to add anything to the, and, and, you know, that a sidewalk is necessary, essentially.
So what, what's, the option is keeping it open if we want to do a site visit? If we determine that's not going to add anything, we can close it. But then what's the timeline? I imagine this might have.
You have sixty-five days to make a decision.
Five days to deliberate and make a decision.
Yeah, if you close.
If we close.
So do we, I hear a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll, I'll move. We close the hearing.
And motion to close any second?
A second.
For a second, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
And, and just, I know we're, we're closed, but for, just for to, just to reiterate the seated members one more time?
Yes, yes. I had seated members as, uh, well, who did you have the seated members as? Um, and I'll tell you.
I.
I had Ken.
Yeah.
I had Chris, Carrie, myself. Then there was confusion between, uh, Stephen and Randy. I, I had Randy down as.
Okay, so Randy.
As the voting.
Randy seated. So, um, just the important thing for deliberations is we only have one seated, one member that's not seated, so you can't participate in deliberations at all. But, um, just want to, I was, I do this with the planning and zoning commission too. You got to make sure just the five members deliberate and speak during deliberations.
Any deliberation would have to be.
Just the five seat, just the five seated members. Yeah.
Yes.
Like you couldn't have three of the five.
It, it just can't be more than the five. It can't be the alternates that weren't seated. Yep. Alternates are free to ask questions and anything else during the, during the hearing. They just can't participate in deliberations. I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, thank you for, yeah, because there was a little bit of a, okay, so that one's closed. Um, I believe we have one more thing on the agenda, which is the, um, variance application. Is this a new, uh, variance application or, you know, does that be?
You have your advisor again.
Back.
Nate's back into the, the hot seat.
Good night, Jeremy.
Okay, so Nate, can I just ask you, I know that we had read a notice into the record at the last meeting, um, about this application, but was it withdrawn and refiled or was it, um?
So we didn't actually, this wasn't actually opened because there was an error made in, uh, determining, uh, this, the variance by the surveyor. So I asked that it be tabled, um, till we were able to refile. So basically, we reran the legal notices with the updated variance. The issue was that they had covered porches that our zoning considers to be an extension of the, of the structure requiring setbacks, and they went right to the foundation. So, uh, they have basically had to refile. They have to provide a notice of the remailing because they have to remail it to their abutters. Um, I did check their public hearing signs. They were updated and were up during the period that they were required to be up. So the public hearing would still have to be formally opened and we'd have to receive those notices, uh, before beginning.
And so do you have a copy of the notice that was, um, published? Do, do we read that into the?
Yeah, I can, I can provide a copy of the legal notice. So.
Oh, wow. Okay, okay. No, I think I can, I can, I can handle this.
Muscle through that one.
I can muscle through this one, yeah. So, um, so we're going to, uh, item, let me just bring up the agenda here. This is item three, um, four B on the agenda. It's the variance. And the public notice says, it started on twelve twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, and it ended on one, one, uh, January third, twenty twenty-four. And it reads, the zoning board of appeals has scheduled a public hearing on the filing application on Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty-four in the city hall auditorium, room two eighteen, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Variance applicant Louis Loja. Location one zero four Washington Avenue. Proposal front yard setback variance on Central Avenue from twenty-five feet to twelve point nine feet. Variance of twelve point one feet. And front yard setback variance on Washington Avenue from twenty-five feet to seventeen feet, six inches, seventeen point six feet, my apologies, variance of seven point four feet to convert single family house into two family house. Time of hearing, seven P M. Copies of the above mentioned plan and application are filed to land use office, city hall, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Mark Trevella, zoning board of appeals, dated Torrington C T this twenty-eighth day of December, twenty twenty-three. Okay, so let me just begin by thanking you very much for your patience for, uh, sticking it out and staying here through the long hearing that you just experienced. Um, feel free, uh, Nate, did you want to address the board first or do you want to hear from the applicants?
Sorry, give me a quick moment.
Sure.
Did want to. I wanted to read into the minutes. Here it is. It's not long, I promise. Uh, this is Jeremy Leifert's, uh, memo to the commission indicating his support for this. Sorry. Uh, this is a variance request. The, the applicant came into the land use office, uh, wanting to convert a single family home to a two family home. Uh, the current zoning regulations state that there has to be a twenty-five foot setback in the R twenty, in the R six zoning district. Um, and as you can see from the map on the board, uh, or on the, on the screen rather, the, uh, the distance from the road, from the edge of the right of way is twelve point nine from Central Ave to the covered porch, which is what we consider to be the furthest extension into the setback. Uh, and then, uh, on Washington Ave, seventeen point six feet, um, would, is the, is the, uh, the distance from the, the porch in the front to that edge. Um, so neither meet, um, bulk regulations for our zoning. Uh, every other element complies. Um, you know, uh, I'll, I'll let the, the applicant kind of make more of their case, but I'll read the memo first. Um, so that's in the record. Um, so this is to Torrington Zoning Board of Appeals from Jeremy Leifer, A I C P, city planner, uh, dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four, uh, regarding proposed variance application, one oh four Washington Ave, assessors map, one ten. one ten block one zero one four, lot zero one two. Very front yard setback requirements to allow conversion from a one family dwelling to a two family dwelling in the R six residential zone. I have reviewed the information and plans contained in the above referenced application package, and I support the granting of the variances as requested to allow front yard setback variances for a two family use. The change of this property to a two family dwelling is in keeping with the uses in the neighborhood as well as the size and position of many of the residences in the neighborhood. The commission should not, in their determination, consider the use of the property in the variance. Only the front, the front building setback variance being requested. If the setback variance is granted, staff may administratively allow for the conversion from a single family to a two family. The property history shows many years as a two family before a previous owner converted the residence to a single family use. This previous conversion extinguished the pre-existing non-conforming two family dwelling use. A possible hardship determination would be the pre-existing non-conforming nature of this and many residences, many residences in the immediate neighborhood. Request is in harmony with similar similar residential uses in the immediate neighborhood. So that's the end of that memo.
Just a copy of that in the record?
Uh, yes.
Great. Okay. I'll ask the applicant to come up and add to the application if they have anything else to submit.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luis Loja. I'm from one oh four Washington Avenue. So I wa- I'm I'm looking, I mean, I want to convert I was when I buy a house, the agent, real estate agent told me it was multifamily house. I I thought it was the two family. So when you get the fix the first floor, we got, we pull up permit, so they find it was single family. That's why we wanna fix it. If we can't help with this, we convert to family.
Okay, and does the board have any questions from?
I just need a clarification. Were the porches put on afterwards? And it's something about twenty-five feet, like he was measured to the foundation, but the the zoning board measured it to the footprint of the porch is that?
So we didn't observe, Mr. Aloha didn't make any changes to the property. The surveyor provided and the survey to the foundation for the variance. And so when we do variances, we have to publish a legal notice stating the exact distance. Because what they're requesting here is a variance for a specific setback variance. And so our definition of the footprint of a home, uncovered porches are not considered a part of the footprint of the existing home. They have a separate five five foot setback. But covered porches are considered an extension of the house and and have to meet setbacks.
And those were there prior to, though.
Yeah, but they just, they had to be in the legal notice. And we 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 issued the illegal notice and upon review, prior to the last meeting, we discovered that they were that the variance was incorrect, and we wanna make sure that if it is granted, that it'll be valid for Mr. Aloha to be able to make the conversion to a two family.
So right now, it's a one family and it has these variances that are less than what the regulation calls for, but it was prior, it was that way prior to him purchasing it, correct? He hasn't done anything to the property?
Correct. That's my understanding.
And then is this an application for a use variance or a use and improvement?
So if they receive the the variance for the front yard setbacks, it's a an allowed use by zoning permit in the R six district. So they're not asking for a use variance. They're just asking for a variance for the setbacks to be able to change the use. It's a little bit different.
That is nuanced, yeah.
Yeah, the the use is in some cases, right, like in other items before this board, the the applicant's been looking for permission to have a use that's not explicitly allowed in our zoning. This isn't allowed use. It's just not meeting the pre, the the twenty-five foot front yard setback.
Really because the house is built already and was a two family.
Exactly. And if you if you've ever just in in general, driving around down like the R six district around downtown, none of the houses are compliant. No, I mean, you can imagine any twenty-five feet is a pretty hefty setback, so it's not unusual.
The difference here really is that they can, the previous owners converted it to a one story, abandoning non-conforming use.
Or one family.
One, yeah, one family, sorry.
Right, so they made it more conforming and, you know.
Then I took it out of the non-conforming, so now we're basically trying to revert back to the grandfathered.
That, yes, that that's that's ultimately what they're asking for.
And it's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood.
Correct, that, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, yes, this is Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
Yes, I wanted to ask the applicant to describe what their exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship is. On the application, it says that it's compatible with other multifamily homes in the neighborhood and was legal to family home until March fif- March twenty twenty twelve, when it's changed to single family. But anytime we make a decision, we have to um not only take into consideration what the hardship is, but state on the record the reasons for that decision, including the specific hardship applicable in this case, which cannot be personal and cannot be financial. It has to be some special circumstances affecting this lot that makes it so that applying the regulation strictly makes it essentially that you can't use it.
I think Nate, Nate, did you have something? What the hell is going on with this thing? Nate, did you have something in Jeremy's memo that suggested that what they believe the hardship could be?
Yeah, Mr. Leifer mentioned in his memo that a possible hardship determination could be the pre-existing non-conforming nature of this and many residents in the immediate neighborhood. And the request is in harmony with similar residential uses in the immediate neighborhood. So, yeah, Carrie is absolutely correct that there has to be a hardship stated for for the granting of the variance. And Mr. Leifer is suggesting the the situation in the R six zoning district where they're all essentially multifamilies or historic multifamilies, nearly none of which meet current zoning setbacks and that this is a hardship to ever convert it. It's not, it's not really clear cut. But a hardship has to be stated on the record.
Do you have any further questions, Carrie?
What, when was the property converted, just out of curiosity, to one to a one family?
In in the application, it stated March thirteenth, twenty twelve, which I I don't know. That that may be from the assessor records. I can look through the file to see cuz the assessor, you know, notes those changes for taxation taxation reasons.
In in as far as the the regulation for a twenty-five foot setback, again, just out of curiosity and educating myself, what is the actual purpose of that? Is there a public safety situation? Is there, cuz I mean, there's obviously appeals and variances to that for a reason. Just curious, like, what is, what is the primary driver of the the twenty-five foot variances? I mean, I'm not sure if you're even aware of that, but
I I I don't know the explicit reasoning behind that. It's not uncommon. Separation of uses is kind of the general you know, reason for zoning, right? The just the the promotion of harmony by separating uses. So I would imagine it would have to do with, you know, making sure that the house is not too close to other houses or too close to the street where there's right, it's just, yeah, the separation of of uses. That's that's what I would think, but um, yeah.
I did have a follow-up question. This is Carrie again.
Sure.
So if if this request for a variance is to basically codify the location of this house, house that was built in nineteen ten, long before zoning regulations came about, um, and you need to do this to convert it to a two family? I'm curious why they didn't also need to get variances for the garage and shed that don't meet side yard setbacks.
Those, so the garage and shed, I'm not sure that the years that they were constructed, but they would fall under the state of Connecticut three year, you know, maximum to take action. And well, any any structure that that exists for over three years is automatically grandfathered in. And those
Understood.
Yeah.
Yep.
If we don't allow the, if if we don't approve the appeal, are they gonna be required to do anything to get their house in compliance?
Uh, it's my
To 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 get to the twenty-five feet?
That's would be, that would be a question. Yeah, I I mean, no, Mr. Aloha stated that he came in to get building permits. They sent him up to us because he was adding an additional unit because he didn't think, he thought he could do that. And then we informed him to make that change. He would have to do it. So the change is already on file that it's a single family, so he doesn't require anything to occupy it as a single family.
But you, so you're not adding a story. It's already there. It's just converted to a single family, correct? So is that correct? So it's coded as a single family. It's set up as a two family. You're not doing any construction outside to extend the footprint of it whatsoever.
No, no, we don't, we weren't doing anything because they have really have a bathroom, kitchen, everything, first floor and top floor. Actually, it was before two two family. We don't do nothing, so we tried to fix first floor. That's why we find I thought it was a two family. So we get the pull up permit, we find was single family, that's why we here.
I mean, if we're not changing the external structure and it's and it's out of compliance, I mean, I mean, again, that's why I asked. It wasn't really, I I knew the answer to that question. We're not gonna ask him to move his house.
Right.
It's already gonna be out of compliance, whether there's a one family or a two family.
But technically, a one family is more compliant than a two family because the use is less intensive. So when there's a pre-existing non-conforming use, the the goal in zoning is to get closer and closer to the conforming use. And so a change from a two family to a one family is gonna become less intense. And so they wouldn't have needed any permission to go that way, but then going back up again to a more intense use, they would require at least to meet the setbacks that that use has as as if it was a new house because that pre-existing non-conforming was extinguished.
Because of the change.
Yeah.
Well, as you described the neighborhood beforehand, the two family is isn't, not in compliance, but it's kind of in the I guess, the spirit and the nature of the rest of the neighborhood. Most of them are in that same configuration.
Uh, yeah, that's what we you know, we looked at other homes in the immediate
Not a standout thing that would be different. You wouldn't be able to notice the difference.
They're all one family, two family, three families in that Washington Ave. What is the other cross street, Central Ave, that whole area?
And just out of curiosity, like how many, when you think of like getting into conformance and reducing the use, I guess I'll say, like as far as like vehicles and and whatnot, right, the the use of the property to get it closer to, like a single family has less use of a property. You didn't use the word use, but you said, I forget what term you've used. Intensive.
Yeah.
So I guess my question would be if they're in in the second floor, like how many bedrooms are in this house, first floor, second floor?
Two each.
So there's four total, two upstairs, two downstairs?
Yes.
So if it's a single family home and you have whether the bedrooms are filled with, I don't know, I just
You're not adding more people to the situation.
Potentially, yeah, right.
People, but you might
But you may have that anyway.
You might have that anyway, right.
I mean, if I lived in your house, I have five five kids right now, you know. Cars in the driveway.
I noticed we neglected to, we have to name sitting members on this hearing, so let me just I think everybody can participate in questions anyway, but just for the purposes of the voting, well, do the members, Carrie, Ken, myself, Christopher, and then we'll have Stephen since I since I had Randy on the last one. Stephen, this is your turn to vote on this one. Just for the record, so we know who's the voting members versus the question asking alternates, okay? Any other questions?
So back to Carrie's original question, we need to know what is the hardship to be able to approve anything?
We have to state one, yeah.
Right. And the stated one was given, was suggested.
At the end of Jeremy's
Okay.
Email.
The Chris, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. All right, so we, do you have anything to add before I close the hearing part of it, and then we'll deliberate and vote, but I didn't know if you have anything else to stay, to say.
There is some way I wanna change also, so I need something collect to pay, how to pay bills and, you know, you have tasks also you pay every years I you know, to collect something, you know, that's why too. So we want convert to family.
Okay, all right. Anything else? No. Okay, so can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Yeah, and I did wanna just before receive the the receipt, I didn't receive those yet.
Oh, yeah, we should really have
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The the mailing receipt.
Thank you for saving us, Nate, from closing the public hearing before receiving the notices.
Sorry. Been a long night. Thank you.
And then just for purposes of the record, I'll I'll you know, just point back to the website that the board has access to and incorporate all those documents into the record unless there's any objection by the board.
Do you have any other cards that listed, cuz I'm just it doesn't, these ones don't state the actual address that they were sent to. Like they're just, did they give you like a green card or another? They just gave you this? I would ask, I don't know, Carrie has a experience with this, so if you receive postal receipts, but they're not the green cards, Carrie, so they don't actually show the the address that they mailed to, so we can't confirm that they were sent to the the other.
Do they, do they have tracking codes where they can be checked checked online? Because a lot of times now they're not doing physical cards anymore.
Okay.
So each one of those, you should be able to track the code online and see like any other delivery tracking information from U S mail.
Okay, cuz yeah, I usually just use the green cards for our records, but so basically you could go in and track the you know, the number that we stick on to the green cards, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, no, you should be able to, I mean, in Sim- in Simsbury, we mailed them because we wanted to make sure we had it right, but um but yeah, those numbers, those tracking numbers should be able to show you what address they were delivered to and that they were delivered. Or at least that they were delivered.
All right, I guess I can I can check that and it'll just be a procedural malfunction if they're sent incorrectly and we can, I I guess yeah, I'm not quite sure in this case if they, you know, do I, should I check it now? I mean, I could check it now, I guess, find it online and and confirm for the commission.
I mean, I think that's fine if if you have the ability to look online and see
Just going confirm cuz they did provide receipts, so.
Provided evidence, it's just not maybe per postal, post office, you know, new post office procedure showing what it used to show, sounds like.
Yeah, be before we record the the decision in the in in the as a legal notice, I'll make sure to to check that and confirm, and if not, we'll just well, it'll have to be a, you know, we'll have to restart it.
Sure, well, should we keep it open until the next hearing and then we can close it then? I think that's probably the safest procedure is to
Did you just close it?
Well, no, I, we asked for a motion to close, but
Okay.
I got one motion, but no, yeah, we didn't vote on it.
Okay.
It didn't close.
Right, I'm deferring to Carrie's experience. If she has her experience, this is a land use administrator.
I would say to keep it open. It's a lot harder to put everything back in the box after. If you do it pending something that you can't verify right now.
Yeah, okay.
Makes sense.
So maybe we'll do that. We'll we'll keep the public hearing open, pending a report back from the Z E O on the notice question.
Right.
Okay. Sure, almost there, almost to a vote, so.
Are we up against any timelines with this one or?
Open tonight, so
No, we opened it
Cause we just opened it tonight.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So I can I can communicate with them afterwards just to make sure that they're on the So I can I can communicate with them afterwards just to make sure that they're on the same page and, you know, yeah, we'll just let's take it from there, I guess, if you want to, I guess, just keep the public hearing open.
Okay, well, motion, do we need a motion for that now? We just.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
All right, and then, okay, so, thank you. We're just gonna keep the hearing open until we can verify that those works, okay, that those worked for the notice. And then we'll have one more meeting where we'll meet and discuss it.
Okay, it it might, it might not hurt to just take a motion to continue it. Might not hurt just to take a motion to continue it.
I hear for a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Carrie, second. Hi.
Thank you, Carrie. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so Randy, I didn't get your vote. Did you? Or Steve, I think you're the voting member on this. You have to vote to continue or not continue.
Yeah, I.
Okay. All right, great. So it's continued to the next meeting. Okay, and then any new business? None? They, yeah, motion to put them on the agenda first next time. The, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, need a second, second.
Second.
Chris, second, all in favor? Hi.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone.